Alrighty, it is ten o'clock. We will start our morning workshop to click to county board of commissioners. We will start with a department update for public works director Jeff Hunter and county engineer Seth Gorilla.
Okay, we have a public hearing today to consider the franchise agreement between Clickatet County and Vista Utilities. We have a few things on two things on your consent agenda. One is an amendment number two to the non-capitalist. To move the replace the dryer project forward and replace three and delay the refrigerator project. Replacing the refrigerator in the jail dryers and more need than the refrigerator. There was no extra money added. They're just exchanged places in the in the plan. And then item number five concurrents to award. A bid to Frank Gurney for slope flattening and guardrail. We also have pay estimate one and final to Oliver's floor covering the amount of ninety-five nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. For the juvenile floor covering. And approval of passment one to stripe right four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. That's for our annual striking and that covers what we have on the agenda for the.
Courtney Road, the contractors back paving this morning and will be paving through this Friday and then plan on being. On the site till they're completed paving Monday through Thursday for the duration. Contract documents are still being processed by the contractor for Rock Creek Old Day Bridge. And staff continues to collect the annual traffic data. White plastic edge lines were waiting approval from Wash Dot for that increasing the grand dollar amount to match the little bit. Soon as that comes in, we'll. Go with concurrence to award the low bidder. Slow flattening guardrail Jeff says on the agenda this afternoon for concurrence to award. Her warning signs and guide posts still waiting that approval from Wash Dot to go to add. Data collection. We're in contract negotiations with the. Consultant that we chose and contract documents are being drafted. The Bickleton area paving project is the federally funded project environment documentation will be forwarded wash stop for approval this week and construction documents are being drafted. Sundell old highway eight right away plans are being reviewed and offered letters. Are almost ready to go out. We're still waiting for a few more title reports and then we'll start making offers for the right way on that project.
Okay, on the maintenance side east end is shoulders and culverts on East Road at Bickleton Highway and they're doing some grading. They will be working on those two projects most of this summer. The east side crew will be. West side crew is patching the city of White Salmon all week. That's anticipation of our chip seals that are coming in. Those are paid for by a T I B grant that. We helped White Sam acquire. Um upcoming facilities work. A sidewalk still planned for August that we had talked about in front of annex one. Insulation jackets were installed yesterday, a portion of them. We definitely heard a different. Definitely worked, so we'll continue to move forward help.
Did you check the change in D V I?
You could actually hear the sound difference.
But we don't know.
No, we'll we'll check that. We didn't have a decimal meeting with us yesterday.
Do you guys have one?
No, we have to we have to we have to go get one.
I'll bring one up Thursday.
Okay, good. Outstanding. Uh the other part of this, the health part will be done and scheduled for July. To take care of that in their entryway, and that is by far our biggest issue that will be done in July. Uh let's see, Piner Center is the same jail roof replacement pre kind of scheduled for this week tomorrow. Uh Superior Court plans have been approved by a D H A P. Grant contract should be sent shortly. We won't start construction though till next year. That's the plan. But the plans have been approved. For what we proposed. Uh dispatch concrete polishing happened last night also. So that one is pretty much tied up. We have to put in some cove base and rubber base around the edges and other than that. That project will be complete. Uh annex four, the flooring still on order. Fuel Island, we reviewed the plans and submitted comments back to the consultant. Radio site tower installation will start next week. Which is nice to get that thing hopefully wrapped up shortly. A standards meeting was held last week. Uh we we went back and forth. We have some comments. We're coming back with more information. We're going to meet one more time next week. And that hopefully will be the end of it and then we will schedule a time with the board to actually start public meetings. I know there are comments coming. Um because I've heard from people, but they want to wait till the hearing. Sure why, but they want the board's captain attention, I think. But like Trout Lake Community Council has said, they have a list of comments that they would prefer to wait for the hearing. Doesn't matter to me. And that's all we have on the list.
Um I have one. When can you make a note to put uh when your crews get back to brushing type of scenario? There's a tree across from the seabirds on the inside corner that's literally growing out past the white line now and I almost saw head on collision there today. It makes a kind of a blind corner and then you got to go out in the oncoming traffic lane to get around the tree and. Here was a big giant truck in their way and it was kind of scary to watch.
Okay.
So you can look at that tree and maybe whack a few limbs off. That would be great.
Okay, we will do that. Okay.
Same tree.
Okay.
I've been watching it for a year ago. It's almost this year. It grew a lot. Um that's all I have. Let me see if it's have anything for.
No. Great job, guys.
No, I think you both do a good job. Keep it up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. For all you people out there in Zoom land, if you have a tree over hanging a road somewhere, please let public works down. They can't see them all.
So we have maybe one on there. It's not county employee this morning.
I don't believe that tree that I'm talking about. It's only a fifteen foot tall type of tree. It's just bushy.
Isn't that a bush?
There's the one as you go out of town, the leaning tree. Is that the one you're talking about? That thing's been leaning since I moved here. Uh and apparently it's been leaning since it started growing. Um and it's far enough. It's like right next to the creek, but looking at it, I brought it up to them when I first got here, but you can kind of look at it and tell that if it. Probably if it falls at a given anywhere near the road, just because the angle it's at, but that that tree is withstand wood storms and I can't. He's still standing.
We have an oak. Lickage house that's overhanging the river that it's like this. Every year I think.
Mike.
And it it makes it stays.
Yeah, that one that one in front of the seabirds hasn't been bad. And I don't see deer there. The only the the places I have problem with too many trees next to the road is where it's the deer superhighway. And you're cruising right along. Granted, you're doing twenty miles an hour in the dark, but deer popping out that you didn't even know were there. So it's like those trees, you know, I mean technically there's no tree should be growing in the ditch. But yeah, it's three fifteen twenty years old, so it's been growing there for some time. Uh and there's a lot of them on that stretch between there. Miller's place. For all those listening, we are waiting for our HR director since we are earlier than his scheduled time. Hey, you're not on the schedule until ten thirty, so we're way early. Uh next up is human research into administrative services department director Rob Van Cleve with the department update.
Good morning, commissioners. Um so we're going to start out this morning with a fiscal update from Jen.
Good morning. Um let's see if I can screenshot here.
And good morning to you all in the gallery.
Okay. Uh so um I have finally wrapped up the twenty twenty-three annual budget book. You all received an email from me late Friday night with that, so you could review that. Um it's been published to the website for the public. And we'll go out in email form to the offices and departments later today. Um but just to highlight a couple items on there. This budget book has jumped from last year was my first attempt at it. Um with nineteen design pages in the twenty twenty-two budget book. This one has ninety design pages, so it's a significant jump to try and get us closer to compliance. Oh, hello. So some new features here. Just how I handled the officials page. And um. Highlighting how the structure of the county is with the um the citizens being at the top of the org chart. Um the board of county commissioners and all of their employees and then the elected officials as well as the judges. Um the structure is slightly different. And this page kind of explains that it I organize this alphabetically. Um because we have multiple ways within the county on how how we organize things that probably wouldn't make any sense to the average person. Um beyond that. Uh we organize our expenses into uh four different program areas, community development, general government, law, justice. And public safety and then human services. So each one of those program areas are color coordinated throughout the budget book. So for department pages, there is going to be a border along the side of the page that is color coordinated to which program that falls under. Uh for the fund pages, the title of the fund is going to fall under uh is going to be color coordinated to whatever program area that fund falls under. The county vision um that I received from the border county commissioners just going over. Highlighting your mission. About the county. Establishment of the county um and demographics for current day. And then the budget and brief, I'm just going to quickly kind of. Go over. Some key points here. Budget and brief is fairly similar to last year. Um to where we have all of the revenues for all funds summarized onto one page. Um again. It's highlighted there of where these dollars come from, whether it's state sourced, federal sourced, inter local agencies. Those types of things are historical revenue. And then this page, probably the most helpful for the average citizen, where does your property tax dollar go? So it divides up that dollar into, you know, cents in sections. So, you know, forty-eight cents of that dollar. Actually goes to the schools, which does not come to the county. Uh twenty-three cents of that goes to your local districts, such as hospital, your EMS, your fires. Um thirteen cents of your every dollar comes to the county general, which is unrestricted funds. Well, so that goes to the road department, the county road department where it's restricted to produce only. So I I think that is really helpful for the average citizen to see where their dollar goes. Um. Next page is dedicated to the landfill and our relationship with the landfill, how much um money that we have received over the course of getting a time with the landfill and. Um what we anticipate to receive in twenty twenty-three and where that is all gone. This is the expense of all funds. This is um where those color coordinations really start to come into effect as well as the definition of the program areas. And then with seventy-one percent of the general funds budget being employees, this page is dedicated to the the employees. How many budgeted positions that we have within the county? Um what our vacancy rate is, the personnel budget versus the capital and the operating budget for our total budget. The C I P in brief is all new this year. Um I wanted to develop this to kind of explain how and. A capital project goes from an idea to an asset. And as well as where those dollars come from. So. This page is dedicated to explaining what is all in the capital improvement plan. What infrastructure is. How the process starts from an idea and the public's engagement through every step of that process. And then our resources for the C I P, um our budgeted revenue for this year, where that's all coming from. And I'll just go to a couple pages here. We have the general fund. This this page kicks off the rest of the funds and departments. So this will highlight all the expenses by the program area within the general fund. And what the general fund consists of. Uh again, a more visual. So each fund page has this top portion here. That is the fund balance along with the expense and the revenue and how those all um chart out over time going back to two thousand and nineteen. Um with our current um anticipated beginning fund balance for twenty twenty-three of each fund. And again, with the color coordination for each department where they fall into that program area. Along with what their budget is this year. And then each department page is laid out. Um just as this adult probation page. So you got the color coordination of the border on the side of which program area it falls under. It's blue. It's law, public safety. Um they have an org chart. Um a little blurb at the top as to what they do. Um and then the graphs at the bottom, a budget to actuals, how their um. Their budget has increased or decreased over time. What portion of their budget is personnel versus operating? Um their F T F T E count, what was all authorized, what's budgeted, um their budgeted vacancy rate. For that department and. For the most of the departments, I was able to get some sort of um performance measurements, some some way to chart out to. Show the board as well as the community what they actually do, how what their workload is. And so that's what this this one is here. We have case counts by location. And then just the real data beyond that. Um cumulative reserve, just to jump to one of your as its funds here. Um this fund is, you know, as you know, slightly more complicated. We have multiple different buckets of money that sits in that fund balance. That can be used for certain things, can't be used for other things. So I wanted to highlight those different buckets there again with the top. Um so we have point in point oh nine dollars that can only be used for Casey Peter group projects. We have the emergency ballots, the emergency disaster relief, what we call the emergency reserves um sitting at five million. And then our regular cumulative reserves eleven point seven. And then this fund has multiple, it's really just a project fund. Um so highlighting what those are, community development, economic development. Interfund transfers, those one-time um authorizations that you guys give out during the budget process. Dallas Port Business Park, which is all the airport. But each fund is set up with this type of structure. Specific to what that fund does. And then um. We have different boards throughout the county um that act like departments in our financial system that really are not departments. So um highlighted what the the board does, what the members of the board are. Um this one's civil service. So how many exams were performed for for each area within that year? And then a project fund. Capital improvement project fund here. Um again, with that fund balance at the top. And then highlighting what the twenty twenty-three budgeted projects are out of this fund. Which is all capital going to facilities and and parks. Any questions?
The only thing I saw on there that. I could say needs improvement. Uh is the six-year transportation plan that they bring us that's on sheets this big that you kind of took a copy of the middle. I mean, the important part. But I don't know that it doesn't give years. It doesn't give. So if there's a way that they can present those to us in their spreadsheet and close. Titan, they leave a lot of room in the column. And so maybe if we can column them down or something to actually fit on a.
I believe the electronic version is going to have the entire. Are you saying that it didn't print in your book?
Yeah.
In its entirety?
No, it's like I said, they use those sixteen inch long things and it's like it wasn't.
Yeah, so.
Like the middle of the page.
I was hoping that would shrink down, but obviously it didn't for the printed stuff, but the electronic version has the entire. Road plan.
Okay, because this one was like, I'm looking at it and I'm like, well. Luckily, I know what they are, because if you don't know what they are, what date they are, you would have no idea what was going on.
It's not printed for outside of.
Okay.
You guys. It's it's available on the website. Um. And yeah, the road plan is available in its entirety on the in the electronic version.
Great answer. I think impressive is the understatement. Um the county's had good information in the past and there's, I can tell, have been involved for the last. Almost four years, but I think it's the most information in a single place. That I've ever seen, looking back historically for from the citizens to the commissioners. So I think it's a. Excellent.
Now, if more people would just read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had that discussion. I. I asked her earlier, I'm like, I wish there was a way to put a. A counter on the website. That for every click, somebody opened it, it just clicked counter just to see how many civilians actually look at.
I mean, there's an old saying.
Yes, it's not many.
An old saying that says, think that that gets funded gets done. So if you want, somebody says, well, what does the county in this book? This is where the money goes.
Well, and I liked the very brief beginning of it. So you don't have to like look at eight hundred pages if you don't want to. It's all right here. And now if you want to go into the detail, you can pick each department apart. Down below. Now, very good.
Um the other thing I have is we have a workshop on uh Thursday and that is the. Basically, the kickoff to the twenty twenty-four budget. Um it's a workshop for um us here at the table and the board. To really start diving in to um which direction do you want to go with the twenty-four and four budget? So I could relay that information to the departments and offices. And as well as with Commissioner Zoller being her first budget season, um of some education to so whatever questions. Um you have Thursdays the day for sure um to talk about forecasted revenues, the um fund balances. Emergency reserves heading into a potential recession. You know, and really there there are ways I'd like to handle the budget workshops with the offices and departments that is different than has ever been done before. But I think would streamline the process and. Uh for lack of a better term right now, not waste everybody's time. Um with coming in and just reading the memos that they've already provided and maybe outlining the memo slightly different so that they could highlight in the memo. You know, any changes. Any new requests, any increases above a certain percentage. Those are all things I want to hammer out with you guys. Before we send out the call for budgets.
And it really comes back to, we talked about this a lot last year. Before, during and after the budget is the guidance from the commissioners to. Departments and offices on. How to present the how to build your proposed budget. What are the guidelines? What are the general guidelines in terms of positions, funding, new things? Those kind of things is extremely important, as you all know, is when we get into the process, usually towards the end, when things get pretty. Get harder to do farther you get through the process, harder it becomes.
Yeah, if it's status quo, what does status quo mean?
Yeah.
Um is is there a target um? Number and what is that number?
So you're going to start like the state does with an economic forecast.
Had if I can manage to get that done in twenty-four hours, that is my that is my intention.
It'll change.
It'll it'll change in a week. But yes, that's.
Looking forward to it.
No, I think that'll be good. That way we are on the same page on how we're approaching. Uh going through the process. Hopefully you can clean it up a little bit, the process, so.
That's my goal.
So, yeah.
I just personally do not like, you know, all day long and, you know, department heads coming in, just, you know, reading their memo. It's what that's always been done, but it really doesn't get us anywhere and, you know, it's not really effective use of their time too. Everybody's doing more with less at this point. Um so let's make better use of their time as well.
Hopefully we all bring our ideas at your Thursday workshop, do a little brainstorming and come up with a policy to move forward.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Thank you, Jen. Casey. So I'll start with the um I wanted to give you an update on the W C R P training, the new insurance pool or part of. Part of the, one of the things that we were intrigued with was all the training that they offer. And I'm constantly getting notices of training. It comes through me, then I push it out. I I I did give some feedback. Sheriff's Department sent one of the deputies to train the trainer on a virtual simulator for firearms. And the deputy was.
Very impressed.
Very impressed, um beyond impressed. And so um the sheriff's going to start. Sending more people of these trained trainers and then because they have a virtual simulator in this case that that will come here.
They have a travel, so you can schedule it to actually be here and the cities can take advantage.
So they were, so the deputy was thrilled and so uh the sheriff and I know Public Works has participated in some of their webinars for um. Public Works type projects and uh potential litigations and those kind of things. So I just give you feedback. They were true to their word. There's a lot of quality training and we're getting positive feedback from the departments and offices about that training. So and there's no cost to us for that outside of the premium, of course. But we don't have to pay once we go to the training. So. And I will be attending the next quarterly meeting in July where they're setting the rates and I believe Chairman Christopher Wells, as well as the board representative for the pool. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Speaking of the budget, we should find out more. Casey?
So the job classification committee member Sharon Carter met with Rob and Jeff last week about the civil engineer and county engineer position for. The Public Works Department and a recommendation is going to be brought forward to the board to place. The county engineer position at grade seventy five. They went through the scoring. Currently, the interim position is Seth was placed at grade seventy four as an interim county engineer. The previous position was the civil engineer at grade seventy two. And so after the committee met and went through the scoring and. And all of the changes, they are. Going to come forward with a recommendation of a grade placement of seventy five for the county engineer position. So.
What step, you know?
Well, it's just a grade placement for this.
They don't.
And so, so as far as step placement, that'll be based on where Seth currently is. And he would go to a step that would be similar to, but not less than what he currently is as the interim position. And then the effective date would be the effective date that Jeff was placed. As the county and or as the Public Works Director.
So after you prove that on the consent agenda, next Tuesday, you don't have to call him the interim county engineer.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I kind of got tired of calling him that.
Yeah, so so just.
Did you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move forward then with submitting that resolution, placing that position at that grade and then moving stuff in into that. Permanent position then with a step and placement.
We want to thank Sharon for.
Yes.
Taking the time out of her schedule to.
Yeah.
To do this.
Yep. The AWC salary has been completed as far as our information. It's submitted and good to go. So the salary survey we do every year, the salary and benefit survey. It's kind of an overview of what the county does. We provide basic organization information as far as how many full time employees and part time employees we have. On what positions we have, how many contracts we have, regular employees, union employees, what benefits as far as how many medical plans, dental plans. All that good stuff. So all of that was entered. I think it was a little over a hundred positions that I updated salary information. And then we go through and I enter all of the updated contract information. All that is included with that is longevity as well. Accruals. All that good stuff.
AWC Association of Washington Cities, I believe, and they're the one that. Post this. And it's important we do this. It takes a tremendous amount of Casey's time, but it's, we rely on it heavily during. Negotiations and other times when we're looking at salaries, because I believe all of our comparator counties participate in this. In a significant number of counties and cities in the state. Put the time and effort in because it's good data for all of us. So. Appreciate Casey taking the time and effort. It's a lot of work. Get that done every year.
We should get the results for in August. Is when they roll out everything so we can look at our comparables.
That's it for HR. Any questions? Thank you, Casey.
Two tough acts to follow, Randy.
Okay. I want to give you an update on the network redesign. Okay, first off, I want to start with the overarching goal of the project. I don't think I've articulated that very well up to this point. My my number one intention is to have consistent network support. Regardless of the turnover of the county. Which is right now our biggest problem. I also want to flatten out the budget from year to year. And the third thing would be to create a replacement cycle for network equipment. Well, that'll all come perfectly clear once I, once I finish going through this. So overall, I want to make the network more reliable. I don't ever want another situation like we had a few months ago. Okay, so the process. You see, so as you guys know, we've already gone through the RFP process and we've chosen to negotiate with with right systems. Okay. They have given me a statement of work along with an agreement to sign, but I haven't brought it to you yet because we're still hammering out details of that. The initial agreement will be a three year agreement with with the caveat of the board of of you being able to. To to cancel the the contract for budgetary reasons on an annual basis. Okay, so if if our if our budget looks like it's going south, we can, we can change directions. Okay, the initial onboarding cost is going to be twenty eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. Let me see. And what that what that entails is is the review of the current network switch configuration for each location. It they're going to create a network diagram. For each location as well as a master network diagram. They are going to create an equipment inventory. They're going to review the network, the firewalls and harden them for security. They're going to apply configurations to network hardware for 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 right systems to be able to monitor. And they're also going to employ some, they're going to deploy some alerting alerting software. So they can get alerts if there's if there's problems and they can react much more quickly.
So again, I want to, I want to emphasize all of this information. Will be known to the organization, not to a person. So this information will be. Built into the IT department so that they all have access to it. So again, no single. Person has the keys to the kingdom in all of this information. So.
And that's kind of the issue that that got us into here is one person having having. All the knowledge and then. So. In, okay, so then they're going to create and deliver the appropriate documents for ticket request and management. Okay, there are some assumptions that go along with that. The big assumption is is they expect all equipment to be covered by SmartNet. I know you know what SmartNet is because you said you were, but but for everyone else, SmartNet is is it's an annual subscription per device. For for the manufacturer to be able to call the manufacturer if there are problems beyond what can can be solved by a technician. Most likely, it would be a hardware miss or excuse me, an application, some maybe some corrupt data on the operating system. It could be a hardware problem, in which case they would, they would, they would be able to step in for us and be able to, we'd be able to fix the problem. Let me see, it it would give us a hardware replacement for effect or for defective equipment. It gives us hard, it gives us. Software's and firmware support. And. Right now of more than forty devices that we have on the network, we we currently have SmartNet on three. I I, there has to be a. There has to be a. A strategy behind that. I'm not sure what it is. But the right system says, says you need SmartNet on all your devices for us to be able to adequately support them. Uh, well, I'll get to that. I I will.
So some of this, we blew it up.
Some of this.
You can, you can write out to to a vendor saying we needed, we learned the hardware before we found the vendor that we need some of this stuff recently. So.
Okay. Let me see. So. Okay, so also through this process, I learned that we have nineteen devices, switches specifically. The model are are Cisco twenty nine sixties that are end of life. Okay, what's what what end of life means is the manufacturer being Cisco stopped manufacturing that. As of the, I think it was October of twenty twenty, they stopped manufacturing it, which also means that they will support them for another five years. But the countdown has begun. We've got nineteen switches. Those switches are were bought in fort in twenty fourteen, so they are. Nine years old already. Okay. What I would like to do is is. Is. Is phase those out five at a time per year for the next for the next four years.
So we're acknowledging that just end of life doesn't mean it doesn't work. And so we're at the end of life already, but it'll be another five years before all of them are replaced. So.
What's the cost of replacing all of them if we wanted to take them five years versus starting or replacing that?
Actually, I I just got an email with those costs in it that I have not read yet, just before I got up from my desk and came in here.
Because, yeah, I'm a firm believer that end of life doesn't end of life. And I mean, if if we're talking a million dollars a year, then yeah, we kind of got a plan for that. But if we're only talking forty grand or something, I might be more open to do a one time replacement or replace all at the same time. So that all your stuff is on the same timeline that doesn't time out at different intervals when they stop. You know, because whatever you buy this year is going to be version one point two and eventually they're going to phase that out. And and so I kind of. I kind of like the idea that they're all at the same time if they can be afforded to be bought.
I think we.
Well. So. So we're kind of on, yeah, we're kind of on the same page. Not completely.
Because I think if you. What we have to balance out and we'll get to that information, Commissioner, we did it to all the commissioners. Is if you replaced all at the same time, then five, ten years now, you have to replace it all again. We do the laptops and the PCs on a five year schedule.
Five year schedule. Yeah, and that's pretty much what we've done with the with the computers is we put them on a five year schedule and at the end of five years. We we, for the same reason, the the manufacturer stopped supporting them after five years. Okay, and so and so we we roll through those and that's been going on. Good grief. Probably for the last twenty one, twenty two years.
And I have no problem with that because you said the manufacturer stopped supporting him. But what you're asking for is to us replace switches before the manufacturer stopped supporting.
Okay.
Because you want to start that four years in advance and I'm saying you might be able to.
Well, remember, they're all nine years old.
Yeah, they're all.
They're all, they're already. We're actually taking longer to replace them than do it all at once, because. These are nine years old and they're not being made in twenty twenty is when they quit making them. So it'd be twenty twenty seven before we got to the replacing the final set of them. So I think we're taking longer to replace them than quicker for budgetary reasons. But we'll get the cost and we'll and we'll want to make sure we're on the same page. We'll look back to you.
Are you planning to stay with Cisco moving forward?
Pardon me?
Are we always planning to stay with Cisco switches moving forward?
You know, we've already, we've already started down the Cisco road and so and at at this point, what I'm learning at this point in time is is the price. Point is is very similar between Cisco and other brands. So, yes. Yes, I. I don't see. A big reason to completely rip out and replace everything. Because we do have mostly good equipment.
Is there downside to? Over a five year period, replacing Cisco switches with another brand. So you'll have. Five years from now, you'd have all the new brand. But in the meantime, you'd have two brands. Is that problematic for?
It could be. It could be. Because now we've got, we've got two. Two support contracts with different with different vendors. It'd be a transition. What I was looking at is a seven year trend, not the five year for the PCs, but but a seven year. The nice thing about, nice thing about that is in a in a budget year that is low, we could stretch that out to an eight or a nine year budget. Budget year. If if things are looking good, if if the county is flush, we could, we could back it up to a six or a five year. That gives us flexibility back to what I said earlier about one of my goals is to flatten out the budget.
But I think we'd also have redundancy in the system. So if we had one not make it. That's seven years, much like we do laptops. There's always one or two that. That need replaced before they're scheduled to be replaced. So I think. Once we have a handle on the network and with the vendor, we'd be able to, if we had a problematic switch, we'd be able to replace it ahead of time and build that in.
Do we have any spares sitting around?
We have. A couple of old pieces of equipment that have not been taken out yet. But. But no, I mean, by and large, no, the stuff that we do have is is twenty fourteen and older.
So if we were to have a switch hardware go bad, we would lose all of that on the network for how long until we could get that replaced currently?
Well, we could probably repurpose a switch and move it over into another location. Like I said, we've got old switches.
That's the short term. We can sign this with or get to a point where we can agree with right systems, then we start to reduce that.
Are we going to be able to do that if we stay with Cisco, use these as backups and keep them in a corner somewhere? So if we have an issue, we can pull one of these out of the closet and then go back up?
Yes.
So this will provide you with the backup. Just in case.
Yes. Yes.
And before Randy gets into the cost, I think, you know, one of the reasons. We talked about it, a risk is sounding like we just keep talking about our plan. I think it was important because it's been a while. We haven't come back yet with this contract because. Randy's making sure that it's in line with the direction we've got from the three of you when the previous discussions and that it's something we can afford. And so he's he's spending a lot of time making sure that it reflects.
One thing, one thing I don't want to do is come to the, come at budget time, come and say, okay, I need fifty thousand dollars to replace twenty switches. And and then have you say, well. Do they still work? Yeah, well, we can't afford it this year, so let's kick the can down the road another year. That makes me more nervous than than to put everything on a on a nine year. Or eight, seven or eight year cycle, whatever it might be, because the last thing I want to do is run to failure. You know, you you can either be proactive or you can be reactive.
And I think. Outside of public works. IT has a six year plan, you know, but I think we can, we can flatten out it even more and. So you can, it's a, you know, with the cost of the, there's a significant expense in IT. So if we can make that a little more predictable, then I think it helps in budget times, especially in the lean years or when things get tough. We're not doing this, we can kind of flatten that out a little bit.
Yeah, I don't want to run the failure, but I just. Same idea for not having issues. I guess it's kind of like replacing air conditioners.
Right. And that's why we're proposing this.
Just causes an inconvenience if it fails. This might cause a little bit bigger inconvenience. But so that's a kind of a question. We had switches go out. How often does that happen with our old switches?
Not often. That's, I did some research. Cisco Cisco puts out a pretty solid piece of equipment. Their lifetime, depending on the environment they're in and the load that they carry, their lifetime can be fairly long. Usually what usually what 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 prompts people to 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 have to change is is the technology has changed. Okay, you don't want to get too far behind the 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 eight ball when it comes to technology, because then you do have to, you do have to play catch up.
I say the hard part for me is. I don't know the cost to replace the switches, so I don't even know what I'm debating or arguing or anything else.
Right, right. So so but back to your question earlier, the SmartNet. There was five thousand dollars budgeted I. In in this year's budget already. For the three devices, yeah. And I think, you know, that's a, that's a target.
And is that just for our three routers or what are the devices?
I think they're the firewalls. Yeah. Yeah. But what I'm, but I, but what I'm looking at is is roughly fifteen thousand for all the devices.
So we had SmartNet that we were paying for on the router and SmartNet didn't help us get through the process.
SmartNet didn't help us, no.
So we're paying for it, but they didn't help.
They, we called them. We called SmartNet, well, Curtis called SmartNet or called Cisco and. And no, because it was, it was a configuration problem. And, um, and no, because it was, it was a configuration problem. Um, it wasn't necessarily a, a software problem or a hardware problem. It was a configuration problem that we couldn't figure out.
And we own that.
And we own that. We own the configuration.
So, uh, we, we look at this worst-case scenario, because we hate to talk about having one, but we had one. And so as, as we look at, as we move through this, how does that mitigate or reduce another worst case? If you have the vendor, if you have equipment on a rotation, if you have smart net, if it's configured properly, which is back to the vendor, um, then you start each, each of these reduces the, the risk. Of, uh, equipment can break, as we all know, but getting it back up and running, uh, is, all of these will make sure it's hours, minutes, hours, not days, weeks.
So, um, the ongoing monthly support, uh, from, at, at this point in time, and I'm not done negotiating with you yet, um, which is why you haven't seen a, a, a contract. But, um, was thirty-two fifty per month with an increase of, um, three percent a year, uh, for the next three years. Okay. Uh, the bottom line, here is where our current budget dollars are. Um, we have, we currently have fifty thousand dollars to re, uh, for switch replacement. Um, that fifty thousand dollars, I, I can only assume, because I didn't make that budget. I can only assume that the intent of that fifty thousand dollars was to replace all of the switches, the all twenty of the switches that we've been talking about. Okay. Um, there was also a security review that, that's in the budget for thirty-five thousand dollars, okay? Actually, that security review is kind of happening organically already. Um, we have had conversations with, uh, CISA, which is the Cybersecurity Information and Information Security Agency. It's a, it's an arm of Homeland Security.
A new one.
Pardon me?
It's a new one, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it is a new one. Um, they, uh, we sat down with them and, and they gave us a document of, uh, cybersecurity performance goals. Um, that, that we, that they furnished us. All of that is, is free. Now, that's all preliminary stuff.
Question for you, backtracking to your switches. Um, what, would there be any increase in cost, you might say, labor-wise, to hook up the switches and replace the switches by phasing them and doing it over four years? So now you're, are we doing it ourselves, or we have to pay somebody to come out and hook them up? And if we did all nineteen at one time, is that one price, but at over four years, now their labor price is higher? Because you have four years of service calls.
The key is the configuration, okay? What my intent would be on replacing a switch would be for them to, um, because they'll have, I'll say them, right systems, would have all of our configuration. We say we want to replace that switch. So they take that, the configuration off of that switch, they, um, they, they copy it to the new switch, and then they send us the switch and we do the, the mechanics of swapping out the switch. Okay, so, so their, their costs would be per hour for their, for their expertise in configuration.
Whether we had one or nineteen.
Exactly.
But we can.
Where the, where there would be savings is if we invited them to come in and, um, and do the, the physical switch replacement, which we don't need. We've got a staff to do that.
Right, I just didn't know if they had, if there was any, uh, yeah, if they were going to have to come here and there's mobilization fees.
Yeah.
And now you're paying that every four, you know, every year for four years versus just one time.
We have all our configurations for all our switches and routers backed up now?
Yes, yes, there, there is a, uh, um, Cisco hat, I forget what it's called. But Cisco has a site that they, um, that they do maintain our configurations.
Okay, so at any time, we can take any switch, throw a new one in there, and then just uproot the firmware and download our configuration.
As long as this, as long as the configuration's good, um, and not corrupt, um, then we're, then we're good to go.
That's why you, we have it backed up, because if it's working, it's good and it's good.
As long as you can, as long as the backup's good, yeah. Yeah. So, so there was fifty thousand for switch replacement, there was thirty-five thousand for security review, and then there was five thousand already in the budget for, um, for, for smart net support. That's a total of ninety thousand dollars is, is what we have currently in the budget spent. Um, what I have seen so far in, um, is their onboarding is twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. Okay, the, um, the remainder of monthly maintenance, uh, that thirty-two fifty a month for the rest of the year would be nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Okay, the annual smart net support, roughly fifteen thousand. And, um, that leaves us, of that ninety thousand, that leaves us twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars for switch replacements.
So I see you writing these numbers down.
Which technically could be half of the switches, and that's my point, why not just do them all?
That's how much money we have. I don't have a price on the switches yet.
What Randy's trying to do is, what can we do, and it's currently in the budget, because the initial reaction was supplemental was not overwhelmingly looked at as a good idea if we didn't have to. So he's trying to make it work with the money we have.
Right, but my question was, if we're really dealing with, if we can do half the switches, but not the other half without a supplemental, and we need another twenty thousand dollars, that was my question on, the extra labor time is going to add up to the damn twenty thousand dollars, so i- if it is or whatever, but.
I don't, I don't think it will. I'm, yeah, yeah, I don't think it will, because I, I, I see no reason for him to, um, to come in here just to unscrew and pull an old switch out and then plug a new switch back.
What Randy and I've talked about is if, at least this year, to get it started, if we can live within the budget, live within the parameters you've given us, and improve the system and flatten out the budget, then we're off to a good start. We'll look at the total cost. We just got those numbers, five, there, there's twenty-five, you know, we're just doing twenty-five percent of them, not all of them, so, um, but we're just trying to illustrate, we're trying to move it forward within the means we have this year, and then get a good, solid number for the budget proposal that'll be coming up in a month or two, so we know what the cost will be next year. Take the surprise out of it, at least in terms of the network.
I guess the other question is, is if we had fifty thousand set aside for all the switches, would it be better to have them come in, use their twenty-eight thousand for onboarding? We know that's coming out. We budget next year to do all the switches at once, so that it's all the same with ensuring that we have a spare, so that if anything ever goes out, then we're on that same schedule for that piece of the system. And we make sure that our, our routers don't go on the same time schedule, but then we, we plan for that, you know, long-range planning over the course of those years, so that you're doing it in, in groups like that. Um, I do, I think we need to know what the cost of the switches are.
Right, and I don't have that yet.
We'll get that to you.
I guess my other question is, is, so we've, we've been spending five thousand on, um, for the smart on the, the firewalls. We have chosen to not spend it for the switches over the course of that timeline. What was our reasoning rationale for not having it during the last ten, nine years? Because when I look at the cost of, you know, that difference, fifteen thousand dollars a year, if we're just adding that to the switches, um, does it make sense to just have an extra switch on hand?
Well, and you throw it away.
You're asking me to speculate on someone else's decision.
I didn't know if you talked to him or not.
Hmm. And frankly, the vendor's probably not going to agree to it if we don't have it on all the devices, because it makes it, gives them access to the manufacturer, which, which would have worked this case had it not been a configuration problem, but the manufacturer, you know, wasn't their problem. So I think it's another layer of support, um.
I guess, though, in that situation, it's a switch. It's not ridiculously intelligent. Um, if it goes down, we need to have the backup, and you pull it out and you stick a new one in, and whether you work on it or send it back to them or whatever, we need to be up and going immediately. We don't need to be troubleshooting it, especially if we have the, you know, the backup there and everything, simple, drag and drop. I just, I'm trying to understand in network, they love to tack on all these costs, so they get their reoccurring revenue, and most of the time, you may not need it.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with your smart net. This would not be a cost for them or a profit for them. We'd be paying for it directly to Cisco, so it'd be a pastor, it'd be pastor for them.
But it's a sure profit for Cisco.
Oh, yeah. Yes, it is.
And we haven't needed it for the last nine years. It, we haven't.
I don't know what's happened over the last nine years, so I can't say. I don't know. I can only say it's happened once in the last three years for me, and I don't want it to happen again for that.
And we had smart net on that device, just so we're.
Again, but the problem is our problem, not.
Which it's usually going to be.
Anything else?
Nope.
Any questions for IT?
No.
I appreciate Randy's, um, hard work to align with the direction given by the commissioners and the money we have at hand. Try and make this, improve the system over time, and we'll keep working on that, so thank you, Randy.
Keep going. Thank you for your presentation, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Randy.
The solid waste, I just wanted to update you on the, the funding for the solid waste program that started, the new two-year period starts July first. So we submitted the application, all thirty-nine counties in this type of funding, we get our proportion of it. Um, our staff person's out on leave, but Lynn and I, uh, give Lynn a lot of the credit, was able to get it submitted on time, and we're gonna, we know we're gonna have to revise the, uh, amended, probably the second or third quarter of the year. That's working with Michelle at Ecology. Um, so when McKenzie's able to come back, we can fine-tune it, but it's, it's, it's been turned in, it's been noted that we've requested the full amount, uh, that allocated to this county. So we're on track and we're on board, but don't be surprised if the second or third quarter of the, the, uh, two-year period, we don't come back and make some fine-tuned adjustments to a DAS per Ecology, so, so we're in a good place.
Probably, I'm assuming, having to give some money back that will be unused, because we don't have.
Uh, she'll be back fairly soon, so I don't see that over a two-year period. Uh, I, I, I don't see that as, uh, one of the reasons. Um, just we have to drill down a little bit more on some of the goals for some of the deliverables and, and, uh, that they're placing, that normally would have taken place in June, and, uh, but that's really for McKenzie and Michelle to, to work out, and, and Ecology's okay where we're at, so I've confirmed that in writing, so just let you know we're on track for that. Uh, Landfill Jones gave me an update. He said, uh, Republic has purchased two new backhoes for the, for the, um, transfer stations, and that'll help, because they were having equipment issues, those breaking down, so he sees that as a positive. Uh, things that does Landfill are going well. He said they've, you know, there've been a few leaky containers. They take care of that at, uh, Pickleton. Their container, he said, was full, so, um, but once he called them, they were able to come, and I don't know which container he's talking about, but he said that Republic responded quickly, took care of that, so he thinks everything's running pretty smoothly from his perspective, and, and he said that new equipment will, will really help the transfer stations, so that's, um, what he wanted to share. And I'll be going out there in the next couple of weeks to meet with Joe, so. That's it for solid waste. Any other, and you know about the Golden Dale cleanup, so Lynn didn't think she could add anything to that update, so I think, uh, that's it for our department update, unless you have any questions.
Question from a few minutes?
No.
Thank you.
I do not have any either.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, we are well early, unless anybody has any updates or something for the rest of it. Which I don't, we did not have a finance committee meeting last week.
You didn't? How many finance meetings do you have this year?
A few, I don't, I don't know on top of my head, but they do, um, there's a lot of scheduling conflict.
Oh.
So it's like we were supposed to have one this Friday as well, and it got shoved to, I think, following Friday or something like that. And I'm not always the first one to know it. Buddy, have anything for the good of the order, or are we sitting here for?
I was just reading, based on the email we got, uh, from the prosecutor, the RCW.
I didn't notify the prosecutor that I will be paying for the fair box seat. Or the demolition derby box seat, and I will be paying the same price that you paid first. Even though she's gonna have six people and I'm only gonna have two, I'll pay the same. No question. And I'll pay by check. So there's no question. Yes, I am, I would say I'm aware of this. Um, the last paragraph is the, the heart under debate. Uh, at least with MS, MRSC and WASC. But it is what it is. I believe some of the counties even got a state attorney general decision or recommendation or asked of counsel kind of thing on that last paragraph.
And you've seen it?
Um, I believe the people, MRSC and WASC, that apparently seem that, that they're not giving bad advice.
No, you, you've actually seen the.
I have not seen the attorney general's opinion request.
Oh, okay. That's what I was wondering. I was gonna say, it'd be nice to see that.
I might ask for it, but.
Okay. I don't have anything else.
Um, one update on, I reached out to EFSEC in regards to the, uh, extension and more documents being submitted, uh, just to see if we would receive those same documents and if we could comment back again. And they said, yes, it's the same continued process that you need, everybody will receive everything that's sent in, the public, everybody will have access to it, and more comments could be accepted after. That was good.
And then for our reimbursement for all of our directors, we're waiting on one less department, and then once we get that, we'll send it over to the prosecutor and hopefully be able to charge EFSEC for all of our department time.
I don't know how much department time we're gonna have, but.
Well, that would all depend on whether or not EFSEC requires an EIS. EFSEC requires an EIS, that's a lot of documentation to go through and review.
That's kind of my thing. It doesn't hate hurt to have the. The contract in place, even if we don't use it.
Yep, agreed. And we put a fifty thousand dollar estimate on it, just so that it's not too exceeded amount. Then it's the actual cost. And of course, it's reimbursement base, so it's whatever. With that, I'd make a motion to recess.
No, second.
Motion in a second to reset for lunch, any discussion? Hearing none, if the staff doesn't have anything, yeah, okay. All those favor the Virginia for lunch, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. We'll be back at one o'clock. All right, we will call our afternoon meeting and put that county board of commissioners to order. I will turn my mic on so everybody can hear me. I let the record show that all three commissioners are present and we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands foundation under God, indivisible, liberating, and that is its goal.
Thank you, everyone.
Before I make a motion, is there any changes to the agenda?
This today's agenda, I did not see any changes. Do you have any changes?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the business agenda as presented.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the business agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the commissioner meeting minutes of June sixth, twenty twenty three as written.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes from June sixth. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Um, citizen comments, citizen comment will be three minutes. Please state your name and general location in the county at the start of your testimony, please. Uh, keep your remarks pertinent to county business or things that are happening inside the county. Uh, with that, we will start in the room if we have somebody or would you like to hold off and wait? She says, hold off and wait. I see a hand up and I see Leslie smiling at all of this. So go ahead, Leslie. Leslie Naromore has her hand up.
Hi, sorry.
Smile.
Uh, good afternoon, commissioners. This is Leslie Naromore with Washington Gorge Action Programs. And I just wanted to take a really quick opportunity to invite you all to an open house. That is being put on by the CPWI Coalition for the White Salmon School District. It's known as K-Link. And next Wednesday, June twenty eighth, from nine to ten thirty AM. We're holding an open house at the Wellness Center. Which is located next to the White Salmon High School. And it's just an opportunity for members of the community, leaders of the community. To learn more about the prevention and substance misuse work that's happening here in Clickatack County. In Clickatack County, we have four different coalitions that are all working towards substance misuse prevention. And we WA GAP are the fiscal sponsor of three of those. So this is one of our coalitions. Some of you might remember it was pre COVID. We held a really big key leader event at the Society Hotel in Benjen that was really well attended. And it was a really powerful time when we had youth who were speaking out about their experiences. And what they're doing with their peers to help prevent substance misuse. So I just wanted to take a quick moment to invite you all again. That's next Wednesday, nine to ten thirty. It's an open house style, so you're welcome to stop in at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Um, does anybody else have a citizen comment online? Please unmute yourself or raise your hand or get our attention. There's a new name on there.
Have they changed theirs? Course has been here. Yeah, a long time.
Uh, still in citizen comment. If anybody has citizen comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. Gary, go ahead. Gary, we can't hear you, so I don't know if you hung up.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Hi, this is Sherry. Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure if it was me. Hi, this is Sherry uh in Houston. And I'd like to thank commissioners from yesterday or yesterday, last Thursday's workshop. For engaging with the citizens. I I appreciated it. Um, I I appreciated the input and the knowledge we received. Um. And um, I do agree with the short term rental ordinances. And I know that that has to go forward within public comments and such. But as we discussed, I do have a short term Airbnb rental next to me. And I've experienced a lot of issues with burning during burn bans, dogs attacking my dogs, my chickens, my livestock. So it is important to know where our Airbnbs are. And put some regulations on those owners because they are the owner of that property. So thank you for that work. And also I'd like to talk about. Solar. I know, surprise, surprise, years later, we're still talking about solar. And in specifically, you know, large scale solar. And I was reading some RCWs and in the RCWs for Washington revised code, um, or revised code of Washington. Um, I saw that there are community solar projects, you know, and those those serve our community directly. And if our county wants to remain being the renewable energy capital of Washington State, again, I'd ask you to. Rebrand our county. I don't believe that's what our county needs to be with all our beauty. And all our resources. I don't believe that that's what we need to be, but here we are today as the renewable energy county of Washington State. But as we move forward with large scale solar, I appreciate the interim zoning. And as we move forward with that, to really consider. As the proof has come out, as different states, Texas just recently could not keep up in the heat wave with their beauty of renewables. We know they don't work. We've been greenwashed. And I myself, out of anybody I know, wants to save this environment for me to wander and wonder for years to come in my my ears. To watch this beauty land, this beautiful land. So I'm really asking the commissioners to think about how much you really want our county. To be in the disposal of these renewable energies. The wind turbine that caught fire, I believe in two thousand nineteen, still stands in destruction. There's been no decommissioning and that is our future. So thank you for listening to the citizens. Thank you for moving forward on items, but as we see, large scale solar. Could actually be a scam and I again fight for the landowners that are told they're going to be rich. And I don't believe that's the truth. I think they'll be frauded and I think they'll be left with the destruction of black glass panels. So, you know, you're talking about cleaning the county, being responsible to clean up that mill in Clickatack. Where we could be faced with a lot more. So thank you again for your consideration as we move forward.
Thank you, Sherry. Um, I have one question for, I guess it would be Sherry or anybody in the room that might know. Does that windmill that caught on fire, is that part of Juniper Canyon or is that a different development? Anybody know?
Uh, I I'm not sure, but you would have to. Yeah, you'd have to talk to the county, but from what I just recently heard, it still stands there in destruction.
Well, I know there's a couple windmills that are working their way through. Being repowered and whatnot, and I don't know if that's one of them, but I'll I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Sherry. Uh, anybody else in the room or online have citizen up? We got one in the room. Come forward, ma'am. Make sure you're green on the lights up there and.
Uh, Kathy Moko, Goldendale. Today I have a question. I want to ask your opinion and it is in regards to. The responsibility of homeowners when it comes to. Dying in dead trees on their property. Um, I've noticed a lot of. Dead big pine trees and. Some could possibly be on a county right away. But more likely on private property. And I just wondered. If there are any ordinances or does does a property owner have a responsibility to. Cut them down. Because they infect, you know, the other trees. So that's my question.
Hope you're not waiting for an answer from me because I don't know the answer. I would have to do some research on that one.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, good question, though. I I can make assumptions, but I'd rather go do some fact checking. Um, anybody else in the room or online have citizen comment? Thirty seven people online. Granted, most of them are county employees. But there should be a few on there that have some citizen comment. Granted, there's only about three that are, four maybe. That aren't county employees. Well, we will be in citizen comment. Uh, if somebody does have a comment or you're online or in the room and decide you do have comment. Um, please raise your hand or unmute yourself or get us our attention in some way. And we will be happy to take your testimony today. I do have a question for Kathy on the dead trees. Is this just up? I'm assuming this is up where you live. Um, is it just one neighbor that's the problem or these multiple dead trees by multiple neighbors? Are these like beetle killed? Do you know anything about them?
Pine beetles, like, mostly on one person's property.
Eventually, it's gonna grow, yeah.
Look across the street, there's all over the county, every. Yeah, I mean, it's an issue.
Interesting.
Yeah, if you don't. Cut it down and you can't just cut it down. Talk to that and give it out there because.
Hey, we we have a noxious weed and pest control board, but I don't know that they deal with trees.
One of the forests.
Uh huh. And then.
BNR.
I just don't know that we would have a county code. Other than, you know, you're responsible for your trees, but I don't know that we would have one that says they have to be in. Living condition or not.
Like, we couldn't do it in the first place because you're. When you're looking at forest health, you want so many dead and dying trees per acre for habitat. So.
This full beetle kill.
Well, that's that's the other issue is 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 the reason that they're dying due to the bugs or is it due to stressors? Is it the lack of moisture? There's a lot of different reasons the trees can die. It behooves everyone to take care of the dead trees on your property, especially if it's near a home or house. Because it's more liable to blow over and the limbs are gonna come down at some point. But in terms of uh, code compliance or anything like that, we don't have anything on it.
I was gonna say, I can't imagine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think just, uh, you know, maybe a little friendly conversation with the neighbor and. Cross your fingers that that works. Still in citizen comment, if anybody has citizen comment of any other issue, that would be, uh. Nice to bring him to the board. I could probably give you some bark chips for some dead trees. Chop those up and put them on your driveway.
But also to answer your question, if if it's within the right away, then it's the county's duty to take it out. Um, if they're near the power lines, definitely let the PUD know because they can, uh, they look at that pretty closely too.
Sure, you gotta come forward to the mic though, so everybody else can hear you.
Okay.
And maybe tell everybody who you are and where you.
Oh, great. Billy Bear, across the street assessor.
Perfect.
Um, I had a employee ask me if there was a public notice put up last week that we were gonna be closed to the public on yesterday. So I didn't know if that happened. Okay.
When a holiday falls on a Monday, we do not do it. We do it for that photo round.
I got you.
Basically, what in July?
Oh, got you.
Thanksgiving.
Okay, it's just a new one for everyone, so I think they weren't expecting us to be closed. So, okay.
So we had employees showing up for.
No.
Okay.
So I know.
They knew.
No, just.
So we had citizens showing up, not realizing it was now a federal holiday.
Right, and just um, saying saying that to my staff and so and we didn't see one, so thanks Lee for that clarification. All right.
It might be wise to do in the future, just because. Surprising, very few people actually took it off. Other than people that are mandated to take it off because it's federal holiday. So. Uh, yeah, interesting. Okay.
Thanks.
Um, still citizen comment. Anybody in the room or online have citizen comment for the board of commissioners today? Hearing none, if you do, please raise your hand, unmute yourself. Get our attention in some way.
Oh, damn, poor strawberry picking this weekend.
Um, strawberry is actually pretty bad this year. And we're probably end up with about forty percent of our normal yield for one reason or the other. Um, which good and bad. I mean, I don't do it for money anyway, so less people get a pick, but I gotta have less time to deal with it too. So. Good man. And strawberries are much smaller this year too.
Coyotes killing these lambs.
Yeah, just didn't have any lambs anymore. Yeah, no, it's. No, it's 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 good fun for me. I I enjoy when people bring their kids out there and then the kid comes back and their face is all red from eating somebody's strawberries, you know, and. So, yeah, no, it's. I enjoy it.
Do you think it was the weather or? If a lot of things flowered then.
Well, and that's me. I do think it's wind related because I think we don't have a lot of what you'd call standard honeybees. Our bees are more black bees. Um, so I have a feeling that there was probably when things were flowering, the bees bees were being blown to Pickleton. So there was less things probably being pollinated is my guess. So there was less things probably being pollinated is my guess. But that's educated guess. I digress. Still in citizen comment, you just heard mine about strawberries and bees. What do you got for us? Anybody else have citizen comment?
Lindsay G.
Is that the meeting you're supposed to?
I, Michael, you unmuted yourself, go ahead. Maybe that was an accident.
And Lindsay G is unmuted.
I'm unmuted, come on.
Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, this is Tracy. I'm a member, a community, Lisle community member and I am calling, I've, I've talked to you guys about the address problems many a times. But recently I found a few addresses that are not linked to any parcels, such as eight thirty, Clickidat Avenue, five four, or five twenty, Washington Street and the five oh one, Washington Street, and neither one of these addresses are linked to any parcels or buildings or, or lots. And so I went to the postmaster at Lisle and I asked if those were legal, legal addresses. And she said, yes, they are legal addresses. They just do not receive mail. And they, and I asked her, well, how did they become a legal address? She says, well, the county approves them. And then they send them to the postmaster and then they, they put them in as legal addresses. I said, well, five oh one Washington Street is a corner. There's no, there's nothing there. Why is it a legal address? She says, well, I don't know. You need to talk to the county. Well, then, in my car, five oh one Washington Street says it's the West District Court. So I went to look in at different maps and I tried to email you guys, but my email wouldn't work. But the E S R I maps, which is for the emergency responders and such. I went to that map and it, it showed West District Court in, at five oh one, Washington Street in Lisle. And then I went to the Clickidat County parcel map and it did show a five oh one, Washington Street in Lisle. As well as the Noah Net map, the AT&T map, the First Net map, all showed five oh one. My concerns are, is when I went to look at five oh one Northeast Washington Street in White Salmon, it did not show the West District Court. It showed the Pioneer Center, but not a West District Court. So I spoke to the sheriff's office about it and I said, you know, look, it's funny, but West District Court is showing up in Lisle. She said, oh, that's been a problem forever. You know, new sheriffs always go to Lisle and, and to look for the court and not White Salmon. I said, well, this isn't a problem. You know, this is a serious problem. So I'm asking the, the commissioners today, why are addresses being approved by the county that are not legal, they're not parcels, they're not lots? They're not people's homes. And that's my question.
Hey, thank you Tracy. We have a few minutes left for citizen comment before we make remarks, so hang with us. We'll go out there and see if there's anybody else that had citizen comment for us. I know there was one other hand. I want to make sure I provide you all the opportunity before we try to answer some of these questions. If you do have citizen comment, unmute yourself or raise your hand. Hopefully somebody's watching because I'm digging back into the Title Twelve road thing that we've mentioned a time or two. Yeah, I'm not gonna listen, get out. Anybody have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? I'm seeing none. So with that, we will go into Commissioners' comments. Either my seatmates have comment.
Sure. To Tracy, it looks to me that five twenty Washington Street is also known as the Fire District Number Four in Lisle. And five oh one Washington Street, Lisle, looks like it's in between this apartment complex. When you look at five oh one Northeast Washington Street in White Salmon, that is correct. That is the Pioneer Center. West District Court is inside the Pioneer Center. And that is right next to the Sheriff's Department. That also has a different zip code, so I don't know why anybody would be getting sent to Lisle as long as you put in the zip code. So, well, I know planning takes addressing very seriously and we do the best. But you will never have a situation where there's only one number for one street in one county, because for some reason, there's a lot of names that are all the streets, the, the same, and a lot of them are named after presidents and local landmarks. And the numbering system is logical, so you just always need to make sure you get your zip code correct. With that, also thank you to Sherry for your kind comments about the work that the Board of County Commissioners are doing. And we're well aware of your issues with large scale solar. Community solar is something that any community or any group of individuals can look into. And I do know that community solar has access to all of the same tax credits that large scale solar companies have. As well as any homeowner, at least at the federal level. And with Leslie, I put the K-Link meeting on my calendar and I will try to be there. One other thing that it brought up as a reminder is, is that when Leslie and the youth center came forward about their ask for the thirty-eight hundred or thirty-four, thirty-six hundred dollar difference to make it up to a total of twenty thousand, I wanted to talk to and ask my seatmates if you would be in favor of that for using reserve funds from our next supplemental budget. And with that, I'll yield back my time.
I guess I didn't understand that.
We have a supplemental budget coming forward. Would you be in favor or against moving over the thirty, whatever, hundred dollars to bring the youth center back up to twenty thousand dollars this year?
Well, I, I would recommend waiting until, like I said before, until we actually go through the budget process. Because at this point in time, we don't know what we have to do with the budget process. We might be cutting departments, we might be cutting staff, but yet we're gonna bump somebody back up the three percent. I, I think that's a, while it's a very nice political gesture that I think there will be some happy families and a happy wag gap over. I think you're gonna, that action would make a lot of departments very angry. They've made a three percent cut, but don't get their three percent. So I think you're setting a precedent in doing so, and I can't be for setting a precedent until I actually know what our numbers are going into next year with potentially losing schedule. I am not willing to say yea or nay.
I was speaking about this year, not next year.
And knowing the situation and the work they do and the families that depend on that, I think they have a little bit of a different situation there than other departments, and I would be in favor of making sure they have their funding.
Then also for the record, the thirty-six hundred dollars is much more than three percent.
It was three percent of actual, the same thing that everybody else did. It was fair for everybody. Okay, now that that's behind us, Ms. Silver, do you have any comments on the citizen comment?
No, Jake covered everything today.
I don't disagree for Tracy. I would mention once again that under Clickidat County Code twelve dot five zero dot oh four zero, road name appeal process, resident owners of property along any note road or a road that renamed may appeal the assigned road name by providing a deposit of funds accompanying by the appeal to the adequate amount to cover the costs of doing the work of appealing the road name. So we do have it in county code if a citizen really wanted to get involved in renaming roads. There is a process outlined in county code, and again, that is twelve dot five zero dot oh four zero. And it, it also goes on to depend on whether one resident wanted it changed or if you got the preponderance of your neighbors to also want to change in appeals and all that good stuff, but it's all written in county code for anybody that wants to come down and file an appeal. I think everybody else got covered. So we will move on. It is one thirty. Which is time for public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. Public Works, come on down. So before us today, we have a public hearing to consider granting a franchise agreement between Clickidat County and Avista Utilities. And for any person to appear on or be heard and or against the proposed franchise agreement. We will start with a staff update when he gets done handing out paperwork.
We have a bigger package, but
Yep.
Be on the same side.
Ms. Lee, I didn't see the landfill six sedum in the packet. Was it in the packet? What was you saying? Yes, you are. Yeah, no, I was looking at on the cheat sheet of our agenda and I didn't see it on there, so maybe I'm just blind as a bat. Right, but I didn't know that it was in the packet, packet, the three hundred page I know it's on our agenda. But I don't see the little cheater tabs on the left, doesn't name it. So I want to make sure it's actually in there before we have the public hearing, which is why hopefully one of you guys have free time to check. Sir, go on with this public
Okay, we'll make it pretty, we'll make it pretty quick. We've done a few of these just recently. This is another franchise agreement. This is a non-exclusive franchise agreement with Avista. We are not, we cannot all franchise agreements are governed under R C W thirty-six fifty-five, which does not allow for an exclusive agreement, franchise agreement. Right of way cannot be one party's exclusive. With that said, this is for Avista, it's for their gas lines. It is countywide. It also includes the stuff they already have in the ground.
Sorry, yes.
It's okay. And like we've said before, this actually protects the taxpayers of the county. Because if we do a road project, we need to widen, then Avista is put on notice and they relocate their stuff at their cost. The franchise agreement is for a fifty-year term. And it does not give them the right to automatically, after the agreement is signed, start pounding in utilities, all of the stuff to get a permit from us to do the work. Does not, it does not give them the rights to put any utilities on private property. Again, they have to consult with the private owner. And that's, that's pretty much it. In the view of these findings, Public Works does not see any negative impact. Again, we have a lot of utilities in our right of way. That's the major reason for them. And that's the reason for the sixty feet. With that, since there's not any in it, and we don't see any negative impact, so we would recommend the approval of the franchise agreement. And that's all we have.
All right. So thank you for the briefing, sir. With that, I will declare the public hearing open. Advising that the purpose of the hearing is to consider granting the franchise agreement between Clickidat County and Avista Utilities Corporation. Staff has given us an update and now we will open the hub, public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment testimony regarding the proposed franchise agreement, either both pro and or con. If you have pro or con testimony that you would like to give for this public hearing, please raise your hand or unmute yourself if you're on Zoom. Sherry, go ahead.
Good afternoon again. Um, you know, I talked last time on the Bluebird Solar Power LLC franchise. And, you know, I come up with a lot of concerns with the franchise. And, you know, I think, I think that this, uh, giving public-private partnerships is a little bit dangerous when we're dealing with government, you know, and I know that you say that this protects us and everything. And I guess the gas line's a little bit different than, I mean, I would agree with natural gas before. I would agree with industrial solar for sure, but I just, you know, have an issue with public high-private partnerships. And how much authority our government is giving these public, I mean, no, excuse me, these private corporations. Last time, Bluebird or Avangrid or whoever they are layered in so many LLCs, we don't know, Iverola from Spain, that's who they are.
Ma'am, this, this hearing is about Avista Utilities Corporation.
All right. So I am gonna just say I oppose it for the fact that I think the government needs to pull back a little bit on public-private partnerships and keep control over some of our stuff. I guess, you know, gas, that's one thing. And as long as you, the government's agreeing that these private corporations cannot eminent domain land, and I'd like you to confirm that with me. Are, is, are you saying that there is no way these private corporations, once you give them a franchise, can do any eminent domain on any land other than what you're saying as the roadway? So again, I caution our government with giving so many privileges to private corporations. But here we are, and thank you for the opportunity. And again, I'd like to know about eminent domain. Because there is a clause in the franchise about it, but I'm not a legal attorney and and I get concerned with how much, how much governmental rights that are given to private corporations. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. I, I do have a clarification question. Are you opposed to the county allowing all companies to put cables and whatnot in the right of way of the easement alongside the road? Power cables, electrical cables, phone cables, cable, TV cables, internet cables?
No, sir. No, 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 sir. No, in that, no, I'm, I'm not. I'm just dealing with kind of utilities like a again, I feel gas is different than some, some different energies, but no, I'm not opposed to all cables.
I, I guess I'll go back to staff. Avista, who, what do they do? They phone gas. Avista's gas, natural gas, okay. So Avista is natural gas. So, okay, clear enough. We have somebody in the room that would like to testify. Please state your name and if you live in the county general location.
No, I'm Steve Vincent. I work for Avista Utilities. I don't live here in Clickidat County. Actually work on the Oregon side of our utility. So this franchise agreement, it's common for utilities to have franchise agreements within municipalities and counties everywhere from water and Everywhere from water and sewer to energy and telecom utilities. Uh, the only way that we can actually serve your citizens is to actually cross your public right of ways here and there. Um, you know, our service lines are on the private side, but in order for any utility to reach any customer. There's a crossing of a public right of way somewhere. Um, and again, whether it's water, sewer, energy, telecom. Uh, and I can't think of any others. Uh, so this franchise agreement, um, and the language that you see. Uh, I apologize if any of you actually read through it page by page. It's a painful activity. Um, I recommend your approval. Uh, I worked with your county staff. Um, just to fine tune the words, but it really is the terms and conditions. That protect your rights as a jurisdiction. Uh, the things that you can require a utility to do. Are throughout this, uh, franchise agreement. To not have it actually puts both parties at risk. It, it puts you at risk in some form of disagreement that utility might have. And then for a utility that has to make capital investments, those who pay for those capital investments need some kind of assurance. That we have the authority to operate in that jurisdiction in order to recover the capital investment. So on the utility side. That's what franchise agreements are for. Um, I actually have the nineteen sixty five franchise in, on my file here. From the Board of Commissioners, and this is just the renewal. Uh, fifty years is a long time, but the assets of utilities. Can last for a hundred years. We have distribution system on the gas site, not here. Uh, from the nineteen twenties, so you can see just how long of a life that is. Um, uh, as far as our eminent domain, if you want me to answer that for you. Uh, occasionally, there will be some water cooler conversation in the office about eminent domain. Uh, if we've ever exercised it, I think that it could be nineteen fifties. Um, that long ago, uh, this franchise agreement does not somehow extend. From you our right to exercise eminent domain. Um, if we have it. Uh, none of us internally can figure out when it was used last. There were sort of that guess some sixty, seventy years ago. Uh, generally, um, it would be really a mess in court, I think, for us to do a takings. And try and get somewhere through somebody's private property. Um, now the pipelines, you'll see them try and exercise eminent domain and. Did Williams do that along here at some point? Uh, but, uh, there's the answer. If you have any specific questions for me, happy to answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will continue on. Does anybody else have public comment pro or against? Uh, the granting of this franchise agreement? I am seeing none. So with that, we will move forward, and, uh, now it's time for the board's opportunity to request clarification. Of public statements as well as to ask questions of staff and whatnot. Do either my seatmates have any questions? Um, from. The speakers and or staff.
Thank you, sir. You, so there was an original nineteen sixty five franchise agreement, and was that for fifty years as well? And so that is expired, and that's why we're going for a new one, not just a renewal. Is that correct? Okay. Um, where does Avista currently have pipes in the county? And about approximately, how many do you serve?
Um, again, Steve Vincent with Avista Utilities, uh, we have, excuse me. Our distribution system is mostly inside the city of Golden Dale. We have thirty five customers, thirty four residential and seven commercial customers that are just outside of the city limits. So looking at our map the other day, uh, there's a cluster on Easy Street, or Easy Street, just south of town. Uh, going out fairgrounds, kind of a cluster there, and then there are a handful on the other side of ninety seven. So the kind of east just outside of city limits.
Uh, primarily within the city limits.
Uh, yep. Predominantly, okay. I guess I could, to further answer your question, inside the city of Goldendale. Um, we serve. Eight hundred, uh, eight hundred and one residential customers and a hundred and fifty two commercial.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do you have any questions? Nope. And I do not either. Um. With that, I'll inquire if there's any further public comment for anyone who has not had the opportunity to provide testimony. Before we close this public hearing to further public comment. Uh, if anybody online or in the room that has not had a chance yet have comment for or against this franchise agreement. I'm seeing none. Um, so with that, I will close the public hearing to further public testimony. Uh, moving on, we are into discussion by the board if, uh, if you think there needs to be discussion.
Uh, this might be back to the question though. So if we had a franchise, and this is for the public, if we had a franchise agreement for the last fifty years. And now it is expired and we went to say rebuild Easy Street or something like that. Would the county be on the hook for paying for their relocation of those lines, being that it is outside the franchise agreement?
Could be. I can't say that, you know, we would say, I would say no first. I would take that.
We would have that debate in court somewhere, probably.
Yeah.
But, you know, Avista wanted to update it, so that's what, that's why we proceed forward with updating it. So then there is no question.
Right. And so the point is, is that we will be for certain, we will not be on the hook. Because they're not building anything new. So even though the franchise agreement is, is now being entered into, they've been in the ground for five years. So if we. Did any changes, they would have to make those movements. Okay. That's, just wanted that on the record.
Any other discussion? Nope, okay. With that, uh, I will state for the record that the public hearing has been closed for their public testimony. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve, disprove, or disprove the granting of the franchise agreement. Between Clickitack County and Avista Utilities Corporation.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the granting of a franchise agreement between Clickitack County and Avista Utilities Corporation.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the franchise agreement with Avista Utilities Corporation. Is there any discussion amongst the board on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the franchise agreement with Avista, so, uh, Avista Utilities, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, staff and citizens that wanted to testify. Alright, next up is a public hearing to consider the sixth addendum to the agreement regarding solid waste handling between Clickitack County and Republic Services LLC. Uh, with that, I will declare the public hearing. Uh, on this proposed addendum as open. And we do not have a staff overview on this, um, sixth addendum. Uh, but I will open the public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment, public testimony regarding the proposed. On sixth contract addendum to the landfill contract, both pro and con. If you have public comment. In the room or online, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. I'm seeing none. If you have public comment for or against the sixth addendum to the agreement regarding solid waste handling between Clickitack County and Republic Services Inc. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. You'll see that. Uh, with that, it's the board's opportunity to request clarification of public statements that we did not receive, but do you have, does either of you have any? Questions or clarification? No, okay. One last time, I will shout out if there is further public comment by anyone who has not had the opportunity to testify, either pro or con to the sixth addendum. To the landfill contract. Now is your time to speak. Last chance. Please unmute yourself or raise your hand. You'll see none. With that, I will close the public hearing to further public testimony and open it if there is any discussion by my seatmates on the sedum.
I definitely think we should have a certain amount of discussion on this for the record. Uh, being that, you know. It's, it's interesting the things that people comment on. This is one of the, the largest. Contracts that has the most impact on all county functions and the services that we provide, and there's no public comment. Um, it's just, it's interesting for me to think about that.
That nobody's paying attention to anything we do? Good.
I think there's lots of people, there's thirty six people that are paying attention to everything we do, and I don't want anyone to feel like this just slipped by. I mean. Um, for the record, you know, this, this contract allows Republic to divert waste from our landfill into another landfill. Um, the county will be receiving less tonnage on that waste. Um, so that will be a reduction in the revenues that we receive from that. Um, for a time at that, while they're potentially diverting waste, they're also opening up that waste stream so that. More waste can come into the landfill, so we'd, and in the end, make more money, and, um, I see this as a benefit. Um, for the county over the long run, primarily that by allowing Republic to. Um, divert waste into another landfill that's on the west side of the state. What we are doing is we're giving Republic another marketing opportunity in order, um, if there's ever any. Uh, train disruptions like there were in the last year, that Republic could then in a pinch. Uh, move that waste, uh, by truck to a closer landfill. Um, and they should be able to market that in their future contract negotiations. So I think that there is, uh, benefit to the county. Um, for that, uh, because that potentially increases the total amount of waste we get. Um, I think there were, uh, a lot of discussions amongst the board. Uh, about this contract and the changes to this contract, and I think where we came and where we ended up is. Uh, fair on both sides, and hopefully in the long run, the county will, will gain funding from this decision. Um, while we know there will be a small, potentially a small revenue reduction in the, based on the tonnage.
So, okay, with that, I will give further clarification. Um, so if you've heard us going into executive session, pretty much anytime in the last year, this is probably what it was for. Ninety nine percent chances is what it was for. So we currently have three counties. Um, that were going to be. Quickly in need of redoing their contracts. Uh, Skagit is currently happening now, and then Mason and Jefferson. Uh, this allows Cowlets, waste to be diverted into Cowlets County, up to a hundred and thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand tons. They get a small reduction in tipping fees, but then that might keep us to continue to get those contracts versus being outbid for those contracts. It also is gonna free up the train service that's on that side. Skipping it here to be put on this side. So turnaround currently of a train coming out of Mason County is twelve days to in front to get them their containers back. On this side, even from Canada, it's only five days. So technically, long term, we might actually even double. The amount of waste going to our landfill over what we're losing. Uh, but yes, there is a small decrease in funds, and it says so in the contract. That it will be the first, uh, hundred thousand tons is three dollars. Um, between a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand tons is four dollars per ton tipping fee. Our tipping fee at this landfill average or sixty five. Um, with that, obviously, if anybody has any questions on this. Uh, we've been working on this for a year. I am more than happy to sit down and explain the whole confusing thing to you. Uh, just reach out. Do you have anything you'd like to say, man? She does.
Good luck.
Good luck explaining that. Um, yeah.
It's complicated.
It's, it's interesting. It does, it's a good contract. It does things like that, but it also allows us. Uh, we're gonna get, um. Was it two hundred or three hundred? Two hundred vouchers. Uh, for the transfer stations, uh, we're gonna get, um. Container drop boxes, cause we can't clean up nuisance abatement properties. That's gift to public funds, but Republic is gonna be providing. Drop boxes and trash cleanup certificates that can hopefully help our code compliance actually clean up properties since we can't spend the money to do it. Uh, so there's some good little trade offs in there that I think will in the long term help the people. Uh, the other thing we have not covered is there will be a, uh, gate fee increase at the transfer station. Uh, it will go up one dollar and twenty five cents, uh, because it has not went up in a decade. Um, that's everything in a nutshell, and again, if anybody has questions, they can throw them our direction. With that discussion by the board, I'm assuming is over unless you have more. No, okay. Uh, in conclusion, I will state for the record, the public hearing is now closed to further public testimony. Um, I would be open for a motion to approve or disapprove of the granting. Uh, and approval of the sixth addendum.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the sixth addendum to the agreement regarding the solid waste handling between Clickitack County and Republic Services Inc.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the sixth addendum. To the landfill contract. Any discussion amongst the board on that? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Um, little ahead of time, but we move on to consent.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with all eight items.
And I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I skipped out on discussion. Sorry. Hopefully you didn't have any discussion.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve pay estimate number one for the Clickitack County Public Works twenty twenty three annual striping program. Are in six four two dash two three in the amount of four hundred and sixty five thousand eighty five dollars. Uh, bids were publicly opened on January first, twenty twenty three in the Commissioner's Chambers. Stripe right was the lowest responsive bidder, and this project is included in the twenty twenty three annual maintenance program and road funding budget.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay, pass my number one. Um, they need discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of paying pass my number one. Say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve, uh, pay estimate number one, uh, and the final for the Clickitack County Juvenile Department. For clever, for floor covering project. The contractor. Uh, shall supply all equipment, labor and materials to install the county supplied carpet and contractor supplied VCT tile and rubber base. Uh, for the record, one valid bid was received from Oliver's floor covering in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and thirty eight cents. This project is also is included, uh, in the non-capital improvement budget. Uh, my motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Um, and for all those that don't know, this is the remodel of the old County Commissioners Chambers over there so that we can move juvenile probation. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of paying pay estimate number one and final. Um, to. Oliver floor covering, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, go ahead of bills.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of seven hundred and sixty one thousand, seven hundred and thirty five dollars and ten cents. For the date ending June twentieth, twenty twenty three.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All right, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Um, with that, let's move on to new business. We are a little ahead unless you wanna wait for, for, okay. Huh? That's what I'm trying to do.
Alright. So, um, it was brought to my attention that the recording fees were going to be increasing beginning next year. And so, um, our office, uh, takes in applications for current use, open space and designated forest land. And we charge an application process, processing fee for that. Um, and due to the increase in the recording fee, our current fee schedule wouldn't, um, even cover our staff time. Um, if we left it the same, and so by resolution, I'd like to have that updated. And our current processing fee is three hundred and fifty dollars for the first parcel on application and fifty dollars per parcel. Any additional parcels on the same lap application. Our current recording fee is two hundred and three dollars and fifty cents. So I plan to place a public hearing notice in the newspapers, both in Golden Dale Sentinel and in the Columbia Gorge News for the two weeks prior to hopefully scheduling a public hearing.
You may submit seventy questions on this.
So can you set? So they pay one one time, and that includes the recording fee. Is there, are you going to design it so that the the amount changes and the recording fee is whatever the recording fee is? And then here's what RS.
Yeah, that's what I'm proposing, so we don't have to go through this every couple of years when the legislature changes their recording amounts that they're required. So yeah, that's my, that's my goal. And it it needs to be done by resolution. I looked at the chapter three point one six, the Open Space Taxation Act for the county. And that's what it stated. So that's, I'm just starting the process here today. All right, no other questions?
Only other question I had was you said it fifty dollars more per parcel. Is that adjoining parcels? Or what if one parcel's in Trout Lake and the other parcels in Bickleton?
Nope, it's if it's on the same application, if the same ownership is we can carry those on the same application and record it as such.
Are you gonna have something in there that is just an idea and you can do with what you want? You're the boss over there. But what we've done is set the nominal fee and then said anything over this amount of time is an hourly rate that's this. In case you get like an SDS lumber type of a twenty seven thousand parcels here doing.
Right, and I'm, I mean, it's really hard. I was asking my current use specialist today. I mean, it really does depend. She could spend two hours on an application reviewing it, talking to the the owner. Or she can spend two weeks. It's it's very difficult to really put in place something that would cover the whole county. I mean, she reviews.
Why we have the set number and then anything above that is so much an hour.
I mean, we're not, we're not making money on this. We're just making sure that our fees are covered, specifically the recording cost. Because that is part of the mechanism when we, when we approve or deny the application.
What do they pay off, completely off topic? What about an appeal? What do they have to pay for an appeal?
Nothing.
How many would you say new applications do you see in a year? And are they from mainly boundary line adjustments or what are they?
Not, there's a few that do, that are boundary line adjustments or some, some like that. But typically, I think this year we had twenty ish. I might have to get the real number for this year, but we scrutinize those properties. What we don't want to happen is a property that's approved and then is in not in compliance at the start. We wanna make sure that we are getting clarification at the front end before we approve those properties. Because what it does is it's a tax shift for those that aren't in the programs. So we, we take that additional time. We physically inspect every parcel that's applied for. So we make sure that their plans that they have given us make sense. Forest management plans, if if they're talking about soil and and trees that don't even grow in that area, we wanna make sure that we're understanding that property and keeping the integrity of the programs in in mind.
So what about, what are the requirements in the open space?
So we have open space, open space, which is mostly for conservation and public enjoyment. And then open space farm and ag is for the commercial product of food and crops.
Yeah, I was, so I was talking open space, open space. Is there a requirement in open space, open stays for public enjoyment? So you have to allow people to go across your property?
Yes. Yeah, that's the benefit. There's gotta be a something that you're getting a a discount on your taxation. You have to allow for something, and that's the board actually is the one that approves or denies those particular applications. We we work with the, with you guys and and the landowners as well, but.
In the past, we have, we have not, but the passport did hear them. I sat in the audience. People wanted their property turned into open space, open stays, essentially so they didn't pay taxes. But they still weren't ready to let their neighbor go. And or they had no way to access, the general public had no way to access their property. Because their property was landlocked by something else. So there was no, in the ruling from the board, was that there was no public good to come out of turning it into open space. They denied those, that were not able to be accessed from public. We haven't seen one since I've been here.
You might get more, you might get some. Anything else?
No, I don't. Great job. Keep doing what you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Serve the voters well, ma'am.
Thank you.
Moving on. Wow, we're up at two fifty already. Unfinished visits. We have a resolution in the matter of appointing Doug Gibson, Marla Keathler and Jacob Anderson to serve as affected county representatives on the Hood River White Salmon Bridge Authority. The bridge authority alternate, alternate positions are alternate number one, South Gilcrest, alternate number two, Eric Wilson, and alternate number three, Steve Yates. Initial appointments are to be one year terms affecting July one, twenty twenty three and expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Do you need a motion to approve?
I would entertain a motion to either approve or deny.
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution in regards to representatives for the Hood River White Salmon Bridge Authority and the Bridge Authority alternate positions.
I will second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the appointees to the Bridge Commission. Any discussion on those? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the resolution, say aye. Aye, motion passes. We're up to board pending or anything anybody has before us that they wanna bring before the board. Now is the time to do so.
And we open this to a discussion?
Well, that's board pending.
Board pending.
Whatever you wanna talk about.
Something that has came across my desk several times and is on my mind is, of course, the FSAC application process. Our lack or not lack of, but moving forward, being able to have legal counsel. In the beginning, we talked about it and it was deemed not necessary. We did ask for at one point outside counsel, and we were told we didn't need it. I'm of the mind still, and because of the changes that have happened recently and the process that we're moving into, we still need specialized legal counsel for those projects. They're very different. They involve in-depth land use planning, complex issues. Not only here at the county, but the mix between the county and the state. And the different things that have happened with our land use planning due to the solar processes. So I'd like to open up that discussion and see what you guys have to say and have to think.
But we just had the conversation earlier about the, I gave the update on our reimbursement for anything, and I think it was Commissioner Christopher that said, well, we don't actually expect to have a whole lot left in terms of that. So if we don't have a whole lot left in terms of review, what do you see we would need the legal counsel, outside legal counsel for? Are you hoping, thinking that the county is going to attempt to appeal any decision by FSAC? Or what purposes do you see outside legal counsel will put forth?
It depends on decisions made at the FSAC level. There's been several times throughout the whole process that I know we were reassured at the FSAC level that that did meet the Public Meeting Requirement Act. I looked it up while we were sitting there listening, and there were several items that were missed in that public meeting. I think so many times this process has gone awry. And I'm not putting blame to FSAC or that it was done intentionally, because I have talked to them several times. And it is a new process for them. You know, they began in the nineteen fifties. And so now to morph what they have told me is to morph those regulations into today's age, plus also to change it to look from nuclear to solar has been a big change for them. So I think a lot of times there are processes that are being short cutted or bypassed, or just the assumption that there is the authority there to just do acts. And sometimes I think the county and the people have been blindsided by that. So to be able to have and someone in the expertise and background for that, to me, would be very important to just bounce those things off of and see where are we at? How are we making sure we're going through these processes properly? And then when a decision is made, was it made correctly? And is there anything that the county, the county should be answering back for? Or or picking up and saying, wait a minute, this, this isn't serving our public. Just to make sure that we actually cross our Ts and dot our Is for our public is what I'm concerned about.
So for me, you know, I guess I would say we're told that we're not land use attorneys, so that we should not sit and do public hearings and big, big issues on land use, that you go to a hearings examiner, but then me and Commissioner Zoller are left to testify to FSAC on a consistency hearing where the other side arguing is their high priced attorney on a land use consistency hearing. I would venture to say I have found no previous issue before FSAC that the county did not have counsel there and present and arguing all the way through the procedure, and we don't. So I guess technically, we don't need counsel. But I think all you're doing is setting yourself up for failure because you didn't dot your Ts and cross your Is along the way when you had the opportunity to protect yourself and or the protect the the citizens of this county. So it is absolutely my opinion that we need a specialist that will do the fighting for us with FSAC. And I've said that tends to get go. We don't have to. Sure, you know, we as commissioners can go give our legal opinions on land use consistency and argue with high priced attorneys. But I, I, you know, the person that defends himself is not the smartest individual. And and I think by not having an attorney there, we are absolutely might as well driving, say we're driving over ourselves with the wrong car. And it will come back to haunt us later, and it will haunt the taxpayers of this county. So I'm all in favor of getting nice outside land use attorney recommendations from other counties that are going through this currently with their attorneys and their outside counsel and because it can't be me.
So speaking of dotting our Is and our crossing our Ts, I think in that instance, we, the attempt is to throw the county prosecuting attorney under the bus and say that that the county prosecuting attorney is not doing their job when.
And that's just your translation?
That's your opinion.
We've, we've, in essence, it's been said and recorded, and what I think is important to note is is that we have been off the reservation, in essence, in terms of, and I'm sorry, that's the inappropriate way to put it. But we needed to ask the prosecuting attorney before we make these decisions. And I brought that up in January, and I brought that up recently, that if we're going to be saying, we want you to go and testify, we need to have talked to that person to set ourselves up so that that person can testify. For the county, from the start, they need to be a part of that and included in that. And and I can't, I mean, if we're going to say we need an outside attorney, but we haven't sent the PA's opinion request over there, we don't send the, we don't look for counsel before we, we pass ordinances. How is, you're, you're expecting someone to represent you, but you're not giving them the respect and responsibility of being a part of that and when you're forming it in the first place. And I don't see how we can, we can do that with that expectation. Now, I don't see that if if you're saying we need to hire an outside legal counsel where it's very clear and we've been through the court process that we cannot do that. And the only way I can see that we could get through that court process is is if we were sending public records, opinion requests over to the prosecutor, and we were getting no response or no answer, then I, then we would have enough standing, I think, to go in front of another attorney, the judge, and say, hey, we need outside legal counsel. Our counselor has been derelict in their duty. But right now, I don't see how we could win that when we're asking for outside legal counsel when we didn't bring our legal counsel on board when we were making decisions multiple times. I don't know how we could get through that. Now, if what you're, and I'm, I'm trying to think of a way around this. And so my answer would be is, is it any time? We can go and hire an outside legal, or not non legal, but an outside consultant, a land use consultant. Because an attorney is one thing, but if you were to hire a land use consultant who specializes in either renewable resources or something like that of that nature. Because when you're gonna go in front of FSAC on a land use consistency determination, your land use consultant might work a lot better than an attorney. I'm just saying. But again, though, the land use consistency, that's already passed us with regards to the the current project that's before us. There's interim zoning that says that it is not consistent with our our new county zoning map. And so I don't see how FSAC could could rule that it is consistent when we've prohibited it in that area.
And that's, again, that's your interpretation, Jake, and they have not ruled yet. So it's gonna take their, their legal counsel and their processes to come to that conclusion. And, you know, we have reached out and we have went through these processes and had several conversations. I've sent request forms and the PA has answered me. There are times where I have not gotten answers, but maybe I ask incorrectly or the process. He just didn't recognize that process. And there, there's just different situations. I, I think you're making too big of a statement that we haven't cooperated and that it just hasn't turned out well that we have the representation that I feel we need. I'm not saying he's unable or not capable, but there are several items on my list that have gone unanswered or said no at times when I did need that. And I am concerned moving forward without having proper representation to move through such a complicated process, where other times outside counsel has been granted like that on something that's not even so complicated. This is a very complicated issue that impacts hundreds of peoples and hundreds of landowners and impacts our land use planning for years to come. And and I just really think we're not covered right now. I think we need to be able to reach out and move a process where not only we know we're covered, but the other counties can speak to us qualified. Their counsel can speak to us because they're going through it with outside counsel that were represented at those meetings and that FSAC and the people that may be pushing back in the wrong way might not know or might understand they're not going to pull off something a little shady because we do have counsel and they're watching and listening. Right now I don't feel we're viewed in that way. I feel we're viewed and yep, we're just going to throw the county commissioners out there to testify and do the best they can do when we need to stand up for our people and know that we're covered and be doing the right thing.
So maybe I'm different than you are. There's always that possibility. But I have some questions and not had answers to them. I've labeled them one through twelve and got the answers back to eight of them, not twelve of them. Don't know what happened to the other four. We just didn't answer those. I would like a legal opinion, not a policy opinion. That policy opinion is amongst the sport. And so while you continue to push, we should have went to legal on the moratorium. Oh, we shouldn't have done the emergency zoning ordinance because we should have went to legal. Again, that's your opinion. And I respect that opinion, but I, I blatantly disagree that we are currently getting adequate counsel when it comes to FSEC. And or the process of going through the FSEC, which is not for Moshi, it's not for a commissioner. Who is, who is our appointee to be our FSEC fighter? We don't have one. And it's us talking about things that we may not necessarily know about. Because we don't have that person. Yes, I adamantly think that people could be manipulating the system to set us up for failure. So they can turn it around and point, well, yeah, but they never asked for legal counsel at the very beginning. Well, great. Now only twenty-three thousand people got to pay the consequences of a personal vendetta because somebody doesn't want to do their job. It's, it's, it's asinine, it's ridiculous and we need counsel that's specific for land use, which I do recall the prosecutor saying before that he was not a land use attorney. I do recall the prosecutor before hiring outside counsel when it comes to be in a land issue. This is a land use issue. And I'm all in favor of, I guess I would say, asking politely one more time. And if the answer is no, then filing petition to Superior Court Judge.
I would like to fill out a prosecutor request form with our questions and send it to me. From all three of us this time, not just from.
What questions? Do you have a list?
I can, I can have your list, yes. And just about having proper counsel, consistent, committed to the project, diving in, knowing what that project is. This isn't a small project. This isn't just one that you can pick up when a prod, when a question comes in and answer that question. We need representation. We need a, an attorney person running in forefront of us, making sure we're doing the right thing. Sometimes this is complicated because it is a complicated subject and it's fairly new at the state level and at our level. Sometimes it's complicated because FSEC is in a changing, evolving form. And sometimes it's complicated from other entities because it's made to be complicated. So hopefully we have a problem. There's stuff that's been thrown at us that was garbage. And we need to be able to ask people if what I'm seeing is really what I'm seeing. And how should I react to that? And what should I be saying or not saying? We need that dedicated person solely to this project, working on it, just like an attorney does when they pick up a project. Just like when attorney picked up the, when the irrigation project for the Glenwood people. It's a pinpoint subject that takes a lot of hours.
Like the Julia did for the landfill.
Correct.
Like the FAA litigator is doing for the airport. Well, this is the same.
And maybe we have a different idea about how big, how deep, how wide this project is compared to the prosecutor and what he wants to represent us under. But I would like to ask that, that I know how big, how wide, how deep this is and we need representation. We just do.
So I guess for clarification, what is your recommendation? Because it sounded like you wanted outside counsel, but now it sounds like you're asking to ask, send over an opinion request.
No, I would like to send over a request for outside counsel. And I've done it once personally, but I would like to do it as a board.
Officially as a board request for outside counsel, limited to the FSEC.
Correct.
Carriage or solar project.
Correct.
So I'm still trying to figure out what this council is going to do. If, if it is the board's direction or thought that the board at some point may wish to challenge an FSEC decision, I think that, that absolutely we need outside legal counsel. If we just need someone to help guide us through the process of what FSEC is going to do. Because FSEC is going to do what they're required to do based on the RCW. They're going to process this application. In the next few weeks, they're going to make, making a determination on land use consistency. I believe there's a potential for an appeal on that. If the board wants to appeal their determination or thinks that we may want to appeal that determination, then absolutely I think we need to ask for outside legal counsel.
But before you appeal something, wouldn't you want the lawyer to stand up and testify during the main case if there was a problem instead of waiting for the appeal?
But the, that's already happened. That's occurred. That's, that's.
But I, we're still going through the EIS process or through that process and they're still accepting testimony. If we had outside counsel now that wanted to dig in, they would dig in, understand the project and they would help us move in a way to make it successful.
They would be the one to be looking at the Cypress Creek's application of all their newer stuff saying baloney, no way, this doesn't work. And they would be arguing that during the next hearing that they will have on Cypress's new stuff, not us saying nothing is a county. And then Cypress saying how great they are. And then what? We get to appeal the decision because we never defended ourselves in the first place?
And it's much easier to have counsel onboard and be moving through you with the process. When it becomes complicated, they already understand your background. If it goes off the rails, they already know where it did. And they're, they're trying to guide you from the beginning to keep that from happening. They can make those moves and help you make those moves. So we can get a successful outcome for the people of this county. If you pay somebody to catch up, you're paying them hours and hours and hours of back time to go back and read everything to get up to speed to where they should be.
To me, it's as simple as this, whether we have a personal opinion on whether the moratorium has any justification or legal standing at all. Great, fine, whatever. That's over there. FSEC has nothing to do with moratorium. FSEC is a separate permit issue that we have zero legal counsel. So if he has a problem with the moratorium or the legality of the moratorium or whatever else, that should have absolutely nothing to do with carriage or solar's application to FSEC. And there should be legal counsel working with us and defending the county the whole way through a process that could potentially put four thousand acres of solar panels on our county land and we have nobody arguing for the county as a land use attorney or land use expert. And that is, I guess theoretically, every other county dealing with FSEC is doing it wrong. You probably should just have no attorney. It works great. I mean, that's your argument.
No, my argument is we have an attorney.
And if you.
And it sounds to me like you've been sending public re, or public opinion requests over and he's been answering your questions. I haven't seen any of them, so I don't know. I'm just going by what you said.
No, I suggested outside counsel on a PA form some time ago when I got frustrated and we weren't moving towards that. I just went ahead and sent one myself and he saw no need for that at that time. So I've been going.
Said no need of us, this board too.
And.
So we've already sent, so that's what I'm trying to get. We've already sent something asking for, and the answer was no.
And because at that time he did not see it, but our situation hasn't gotten better. It's gotten deeper. And every day we get into this, it gets deeper and you have to look at it too. This isn't just us as a board. We're talking for our departments too. If there's an error made in land use planning over this whole thing, it could put our planning director at risk. If there's an error made down the road because of some other piece of paperwork or some other decision we didn't make at the departments or help them move through it too with legal counsel, we could put those departments at risk too. They need to know that they're on solid ground and making right decisions just as much as we do. And we need to provide that one. And it, all I'm saying is it's a very big project that it takes a commitment. It takes a full-time commitment to hire somebody to pick up that project, to pick up those files and walk us through the balance of what's going on.
So being that we put it forward before and it was no, and
And those were different circumstances.
Putting it for, putting that question forward again. But when the answer comes out as no, I think we all need to, to look at that, the Susan Drummond case and look at how higher of a bar it takes in order to get the Superior Court Judge to overrule what the PA wants to do and that's a pretty high bar nowadays after that court case.
And I, I knew Susan Drummond and I've read that case. And I've seen, I've seen outcomes of those for asking for outside counsel from people over that.
So what you're recommending is that if he says no again, I look at a case and then don't try because I might not win. So I can just let twenty-three thousand residents down. And hundred, you're happy, but I should just let twenty-three thousand down because I might fail.
No, if you were listening, I was always looking for the way around it and the way around it is to hire a land use consultant that has had experience in this that you don't have to ask the PA for. They won't be arguing or they, they can't go in front of a judge and, and, and appeal.
What a land use hearing is. That hearing is, the hearings examiner is essentially the judge. Is he, am I right?
So again, what I'm saying is, is we need somebody, you feel that we need somebody to give us advice on the process and how this is going and to look over these documents.
I don't know that's your words. She said to guide us through the process and get involved in the FSEC process.
And I don't. And I, and I understand what you're saying about a land use consultant, but I don't think they have the law background that we need. Everything we touch with this goes back to RCWs and, and comes back around and they have their attorney general opinions and we need to be weighing out every one of those every time that we're dealing on those things. And I don't, I don't think that I, I'd like to look at the list of who sat in on the land use consistency hearing and who had the interest to do that and who cared about our county and these people to move forward with that and be involved. That was a hearing. And it was left to, to me and Dan's testimony. There was even departments.
I am not a land use expert and I am not a lawyer. And I should not have been the one arguing for the county of that land use consistency here.
So again, though, in that, in that hearing, we can argue for how our residents feel. We can argue about how we feel about it. I think the issue is when it comes down to the law and you're arguing the law. If I, I'm sorry, it feels to me like we're using a, may I finish?
It comes back to credibility.
People's words.
Yeah, you are. It comes back to credibility. And everybody knows the, the statement about the lawyer who, the person that represents himself as a lawyer is a fool. When we testify on those things and we have to talk about law, we have to talk about how different situations meet the criteria of what we're working on, we can look pretty foolish. And I would much rather feel better as an elected official for this county and for my own personal coverage as a elected official, have an attorney representing me, having him talk to those issues, having him talk about qualified RCWs and things that he knows that he's bounced off of us and educated us, but he speaks for us. And it goes to your credibility.
So I guess, I guess if, if there's, it was brought up earlier today, if there's one place in, in Washington State that's that are renewable resource capital that has an energy overlay zone that has everything in place in order saying, come, bring us your wind, bring us your, your projects, it's Clickitad County. And so do you really want the attorney, has to be honest, to sit up and, and attempt to say, no, we, we don't, this is not consistent with the land. So, so I'm, what I'm saying is.
Yeah, I'm not saying he's going to say no.
That's not what they're saying.
I'm saying he's going to know the ins and the outs. And there are twists and there are shortfalls within some of the things within our land use planning. We all know it. And there are twists and there are shortfalls at FSEC. And we need a legal mind standing in the middle of that, saying the right thing to FSEC so that we're not misquoting anything, so that we're not misinterpreting anything, so that the right information goes forward to protect the people of this county like it should. And he's not going to be fighting that fight like a legal battle. He's representing us to get us through the process the way we can, the best we can. Then at that point, if it does fall off the ledge and it is incorrect, he'd be able to say, yeah, this is a problem. You've got a reason for a suit here and we'd have a qualified person telling us.
And I think you have legal counsel actually guiding through the process with FSEC saying, hey, wait a minute, you didn't, like you mentioned earlier, you didn't do this in the timeline that you were supposed to by RCW. That, I mean, that happens now. That doesn't happen, oh, wait, let's go to the appeal four years from now. I mean, you get involved in the process to begin with.
And.
And we understand your side of this.
And as elected officials, we owe that to the people because if we don't do it, and I've seen it happen before, if the county doesn't stand up for the people, where does that leave them? They end up civil and they end up spending their money and they end up spending years fighting battles where if the county would have made a decision and represented their people legally and moved it through the right processes, the right outcome would have came out and nobody would have questioned it. And then you don't have citizens suing somebody else and spending their lifetime earnings.
And I would at least argue that at least you're doing what the people want and defending the people. This board voted to defend or fight the tractee determination when it knew there was less than a one percent chance of overturning that decision. The prosecutor was right here arguing to spend that money on a one percent chance, yet we have something that affects more people than the tractee decision. Nope, the legal count, I'm not having. That's, that's absolutely ridiculous and I, I work for the voters of this county and I am not going to stand before them and say, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't. I didn't push harder to get legal counsel because they might have said no. The judge might have said no. No, I, to me, it's, I'm going to ask the prosecutor and either does it or he says no, that's his choice. But the people get a no, he says no. And then I'm going to go to Superior Court Judge and the Superior Court Judge is either going to say yes or he's going to say no. But at least I'm going to be able to tell the people why they don't have that. If that's the decision. But you're automatically passing it off that the Superior Court Judge is going to say, no, you can't have it. I'm pretty sure if Superior Court Judge knew what was actually happening in the real world and the entire situation, pretty sure Superior Court Judge is going to give outside counsel. I have no doubt about it.
Well, if you have no doubt about it, then we might as well go down this path and find out what the Superior Court Judge says as well as what the PA says because it seems like as you, as you like to say, it's always easier to catch something with honey than with a bat.
Well, and in a way too, Jake. It's an easy thing to say, let's agree, let's send this request to the prosecutor because it's easy to assume that he won't. But with a good question, with sound reasoning, he may, he may consider it and say, you're right, this has turned into something that we didn't think it was. And he may answer, let's do this. And he may give us his blessing and say, yeah, you're right, with his time constraints and everything that they have to put up with and prosecute and work on and then all the other projects going that he's involved in. And now we want. And now we want this coverage. He may see the sensibility and at this juncture, at this time, you know, we're probably, probably ready for outside.
Missioners, I agree with you 100% because if we look back to the FAA, he originally said, no, we will not use an FAA outside, even though the city of the Dawes was willing. And after we got into it a few months, then he, he agreed to use, uh.
That's a good, that's a good example.
So you're correct. He may change his mind. I am in full support of sending over the question again. But I guess I still look at it as if we are hoping or looking to appeal a decision.
No, it's not.
We should make that very clear that that is a possibility because that might change his mind. If we, we, the county.
I think there is no doubt that if they have a problem, the county wouldn't just lay down and take it. I would certainly hope if the county doesn't like the rendering of whatever decision came out of FSAC, that there would be an appeal and we wouldn't just lay down and take it. Um, I.
Well, and I.
Hope, but again, we don't get to be the decision maker.
No, but and just like.
Get to be the decision.
On whether or not we sue?
Yeah. Because you always have the consequences to go higher than your one legal counsel appointed by law.
And just like the FAA letter, um, those two councils, the city of the Dawes and Mr. Canal were informed and they did receive updates and they did receive. So it isn't like he's not in touch with the process, helping guide the process, helping say, sure, that attorney is still moving in the right way. They're kind of essentially maybe his staff. I'm just saying, in a way, they, they become partners to help this move thing in the correct way. A helpmate to him, uh, with their expertise background. Um, so it isn't like he's disinvolved.
The recommendation that we should be asking one more time.
Mm-hmm.
If the answer is still no, then we only have one step farther than that to go. And then the board can decide whether they're willing to take that further step.
So are we agreed in sending him a PA request?
You have my agree. Now here's the question, who is going to write that PA request? Are we trusting you to write that PA request? Are we having staff do it? How would you like it? Your idea?
I was going to look at you and say, would you like to write it and then share it? No, we'll recraft it.
Want him to read it. It probably shouldn't come from me.
Um, I can write it and share it and see if you approve. No?
If you can write it and give it to, to, to staff.
But it will be from the board.
I, I am fine with whatever you write. I don't need it.
Thank you.
Uh-oh. Okay.
Unless it's on a Tuesday.
Yep, unless it's you're bringing it back next Tuesday for word smithing, so.
Or Thursday.
Yeah, no, go ahead, make it happen.
Lee can.
Hopefully that gets us the final answer before.
Okay.
Uh, any other pending issues before us today?
Um, I just heard that Oregon legislature put $20 million for the Hood River Bridge in their, in their budget.
I thought they weren't going to put any money in for like a year or two because they didn't have it. But it was changed.
So the let, no, what happened was is the, the Oregon senators on our side stopped going to work for quite a long time. And so they've got, I think, one week left and they're putting together their budget bills. And we are in for 20 million. The Burnside Bridge is in for 20 million. The IBR project, the IFI project's getting 125 million and Bridge of the Gods is getting zero. So, um, 20 million will allow, with the 20 and the 15 from Washington, we'll be able to move forward with design. So, uh, we're off to the races.
Oh, good.
As long as you guys promise to do your design work better than the IFI bridge because, boy, I can tell you some horror stories on that one. They just kept building the blueprints not high enough. And then the Coast Guard wouldn't approve it because it ain't high enough. So they would send it back out to the guy to do it all over again, pay him again, of course. And then build it again, again, not high enough, three times, paid the guy three times. Still couldn't be high enough.
Well, you know, there's been a many hundreds of millions of dollars spent on the IFI project and they are.
A waste of money out there.
Yep, why are you far too many cooks in that kitchen?
Well, I'm surprised Oregon paid anything because Oregon wants Washington to pay for it, so.
Yeah.
Now, both sides are in it for a billion, but it's going to be a $10 trillion project.
Interesting.
I can say that much.
Um, anything else from staff or directors online or electeds online or anybody? Or we?
We have one other pending and that's Board of Adjustment. And there is an open position, uh, District Two. Um, and there, there are a few people that have said they would send in applications. So maybe Thursday, we'll see if any applications have came in and we'll talk about that for next Tuesday.
Uh, we can talk about it Thursday. We'll, and then we'll make a decision till Tuesday.
Can't do anything, right?
We, so legally, technically, we can on Thursdays. Every meeting is a meeting. We just call it workshops and we have a internal goal policy.
Right, we don't because we don't want the public thinking we're in here actually conducting business when they're not looking. So we don't do anything. We don't make motions. We don't agree on things on Thursday, even though we could.
I'm just saying, if anybody has potential applicants, please get them to send their applications in.
All right, all you people online that live in District Two, send your application in.
Board of Adjustment, it's a fun board. Do it.
You get to hear all the conditional use permits, potential RV parts. You get to know where things are happening, where grape vineyards are being located. You're the first person to know everything.
You know what? I couldn't figure where picture on the front of our budget book came from. I think it's in the White Salmon Valley, but I can't figure out what vineyard it was.
I was thinking it's up, um, I, I wanted to say Spring Creek Road, but Underwood. It looks.
Can't be Underwood.
Straight across from Mount Hood. That's Mount Hood.
That's Mount Hood, but I can't figure it out. The one, the one I was thinking is, is the one up, um, Oak Ridge Road.
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
Based on this nub right here of Mount Hood, I wouldn't doubt it if this wasn't even taken in our county. And I bet you this was actually taken on the Hood River side of the river.
No, I can't, because you can see.
I was thinking Oak Ridge Road too, that one up Oak Ridge.
You can see Middle Mountain there, so it has to be taken from.
It kind of went up and it was very steep and it ended right at a big barn. Have you been up there?
But I just trying to figure it out because, you know, if you're overlooking the Houston Valley, the only thing I can think of is that's my, my upper field right there. But this doesn't, this little edge here doesn't look right, so I can't figure it out.
Maybe it's Photoshop.
That might be, we're, well, I'll ask Jim.
Yeah, maybe she made a pretty picture.
Fill it up Google somewhere and it goes now.
I, it's not, it's not very often, there's not a spot that I can't tell you where it's at.
I can't.
Especially if it's in my valley.
Close me in. I think it's Oak Ridge.
Yeah, I would say if it's in that valley, that's the direction. But say, based on this hump, I only see that hump looking at it from the Portland side, not from the north. I look down at it from the north, that's in the middle of it, not on the left. And what's weird is there's a middle mountain on the river side too. By the park, used to ride dirt bikes on it. Right up next to Pine Mon, which if I, my guess is right here.
Okay, uh, here's one more for us. So we had all the open houses for the new tolling on the Hood River Bridge. Um, and they're asking for, in essence, my, um, agreement, uh, to move forward. Option one, got the most amount of votes, of course, because that was the lower amount for the locals. Um, and so that is, uh, currently autos would go from Breeze Buy from a dollar to a dollar 75. Um, commercial trucks and vans would go from $4 to $6. Um, three axle trucks would go from $6 to $9 for Breeze Buy. Um, they want an affirmative that we're, we're good for those prices. A 75% increase for autos versus a $1 increase for autos. You don't care.
You said on, oh, I care.
Well, what would you like?
They don't want my opinion.
Well, what's your opinion?
Well, I, I'm questioning why it's $7 for a duly truck. They don't list that.
Uh, commercial trucks, vans.
A duly truck is not a commercial.
Well, that's what they're calling it.
I fully understand that.
I know.
That's why I said, that's why you're on the board and not me.
Well, I've, I mean, the cash is $6 going to $8 for a duly.
Will they implement these?
Because they're carrying two tires more than a truck that doesn't have a two tire.
They'll implement these charges when your board's in place and then the board will have control of that.
The board is going to implement these charges, not the new board.
Yeah.
And they get to use them for the next two years?
Yeah, as I said, I'm obviously not in favor because they get to keep the money, but it's up to them.
All of the, all of the increase goes to the Bay State Bridge Authority.
Okay.
Only to be used on the new bridge, so.
Aware of that, but they get to keep their $1 slash $2. So I'm raising the rate on, I'm not raising it. They will be raising the rate on some people while they're still putting money into their own pocket over here. And I don't think that's right. I don't think it's fair, but.
But they are opting out.
Only until 2026.
Yes.
And they're supposed to reduce that between now and then. And that was as good as the negotiations could get.
And it was good because it was a lot longer before you got down to 2026.
Yes, that is correct.
Well, they had two years off.
As long as you're getting the, the overage on that.
Yes, all the new increase. So they just want to make sure they need, need an affirmative. Um, are you, are you going June 21st, uh, up? Are you heading up for the meeting?
It's the 26th.
I, I just got an email from Pinky Vargas. Everybody take a look at your email.
Yeah, I just thought.
I just came through them.
21st is tomorrow.
That's why.
Oh.
The Skadix Cogs Transportation Board. I haven't even heard of that.
So it's a transportation board.
County of government transportation.
So we, we have a cog board.
Yes.
But, um, yeah, this isn't, this is not the commissioner hearing thingy.
No.
Um, this is just a chance to talk to the mayors if you haven't yet.
And they're going to probably talk about the 940 diesel trucks it's going to take.
Public hearing coming up on June 26th.
Okay. And you're still planning on going up to 26th, right?
The 26th, yes.
Did you want to call in on tomorrow for the cog meeting and?
Yes, um, somebody should. So I can do it or if somebody else wants to be part of it.
If you're, if you're going up on the 26th, I think it'd be best for you so that the, those mayors are seeing.
Okay. I'll do it tomorrow then.
Yeah, that's kind of the kicker is you guys have both kind of been in this. You kind of need to see it through. I will be happy to do them all in the future.
Negotiator for the last year.
You're trying to cut me out of it, so.
No, I did not.
Um, they need, they need to follow your face. That's, that's the kicker. So whoever it is needs to be it going forward and if somebody other than me, that's fine. It just needs to be the same person all the time.
I will tell Pinky I'll be on tomorrow for this at nine o'clock.
Okay, anything else?
Anything in my calendar, my emails? We're on the board pending list that we haven't updated for a while because we actually take care of the board pending stuff.
I'm, uh, I am putting in, uh, my comment that the, the duly, uh, for that, it seems excessive.
Well, you, I, I guess I look at it as a car's going up 75 cents, but the duly goes up how much?
$2.
How is it fair?
I think $2.
I mean, how, how is that possibly fair? But how is it possibly fair that my current truck that only has two wheel wells pays $2, but my old truck paid seven because it carried two more wheels?
I was reading, how did we get back to this?
It's a way for hippies to tax country folks. That's what it is.
Hippies to tax country folks.
Wow. They want to punish you for having a diesel or a duly. It's a punishment for not driving.
I, I would say I, I know all the park commissioners now and I have yet to see a hippie on that.
They obviously don't drive any duly, so they'd have had a problem with it when they made it.
But I'll make sure to let them know that you think they're hippies.
All right. Whoever made the rule.
Well, I think we've done a fair amount of damage today. With that, I would, uh, happily, happily like to make a motion to adjourn, uh, letting the record know that we will be, uh, coming back, uh, 9:00 AM Thursday, June 22nd for a scheduled workshop.
And I will second.
Okay, motion is second to, um, adjourn the meeting. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all is in favor of adjourning until Thursday, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you for agreeing to attend that. I didn't know if you were busy or not.
You're welcome. If you have any. Yep. Me too.